Evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. At quick notice that this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 31st, 2025, and the Two River Times on January 23rd, 2025. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Court. A copy of the notice has also been sent to members of the public that have requested such information in accordance with the statute. At quick notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include the statement in the midst of this meeting. And so before we do a roll call, Sheila, we're going to swear in Patrick as our new member before we do the roll call. Then we'll have absolutely total flag.
Excuse me, raise your right hand. Feed that for me. Hi.
Hi.
Sit your knee.
Patrick Grandinetti.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
The duties of Borough Fairhaven Planning Board Member according to best of my abilities.
The duties of the Fairhaven Planning Board Member according to the best of my abilities.
Welcome aboard. Yeah, if you get the sign back. Then we can get out of the meeting all the time. It's official there. And then I quietly whisper, we only yell "talk!"
It's good to be here. So why don't we proceed with the roll call?
Mr. Bush, here. Mr. Olson. Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Palo.
Here.
Mr. Gavall.
Here.
Mr. Nittler. Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Antonin.
She's here.
She's here. So sorry. Mr. Grandinetti.
There. Great, so let's say goodbye to legions. My allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before we get started with new business, let's just take care of the regular, the meeting minutes of people from last, from last time.
Uh, Mrs. Bush, yes.
Okay, let's make a motion to overturn, so last meeting, yeah.
Just come sit down. Uh, Mr. Mill.
I wasn't there.
Yeah.
States.
Yeah, they're saying.
Uh, Mr. Palo.
Yes.
Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Antonin. I've seen.
Okay, so we're going to open the meeting tonight with the Fairhaven Yoga LLC 772 River Road application. The applicant is receiving an amendment to the prior site plan approval for the subject of the fitness studio to open for classes at 5:00 AM. And so we're going to hear that, we're going to hear that application this evening. And so I want to just go over a couple of things in terms of, you know, what our jurisdiction is and sort of how this falls into, into our, into our lap. For review, yeah.
I'm sorry, hold on. Yes, this is a, this is an amendment to a site plan now. So because it's a site plan and an amendment to it, the applicant received site plan relief some time ago. They're coming to seek an amendment to that extensively to be relieved of one of the conditions, one of the standing conditions in our zoning section. Okay, it's not in our client section, this is in our zoning section. So this requires if you're going to grant relief either C1 or C2 variance depending on how the applicant proceeds. The applicant this evening is seeking relief from Section 30-7.30, hours of operation, which states in relevant part, no business office or commercial activity which invites or permits customer or public use, visitation or occupancy, shall operate between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM except, one, those businesses such as establishments licensed to serve alcoholic beverages, close parent, which have their hours regulated by government law, regulation, or ordinance, or two, in accordance with a specific site plan approval by the visible agency. I don't anticipate that you're going to be hearing that, that this is a, what I would characterize as a highly regulated industry. So that I think you're probably going to be hearing information where they seek, as it says in the ordinance, relief from this in accordance with a specific site plan approval by the municipal agency. In short, we're the municipal agency that has the ability to grant them that relief provided they give you sufficient proofs under their variance relief. I don't anticipate, although I don't speak for the applicant, that you're going to be hearing about C1 hardship variance. But I think you're going to be hearing more as well the testimony of the C who, the flexible C, where, and I'll articulate this a little bit clearer, basically that the benefits or the deviations from the ordinance in this instance needs to be operating at a different time. But they, those, they substantially outweigh, you know, the burden of the ordinance, if you will. And it's not for the benefit of the applicant themselves, but for the benefit of the community. What I like to say sometimes in that, in that instance is if mayor and council were originally designing the standards, would they have seen this as something that should be starting, I think you're going to hear earlier than the restraint. And I'll get into some of the proofs, and I'm sure the applicant is going to remind you of those proofs. But in addition to those proofs, I mean briefly state, the applicant is also, and he'll probably take care of this preliminarily, a number of waivers. And as you can imagine, waivers are from some of the site plan or the checklist waivers as opposed to design waivers. The checklist waivers you have, because as you probably already discerned, there's really no need to submit an environmental impact statement that you're seeking is to start earlier in the day. So we will read those into the record.
There's also no site modifications.
Yeah, there's, there's not going to be.
Knocking down a wall.
From what has been, we have had.
Doing anything outside.
There's no change to the physical structure, there's no change to parking, there's no change to any other aspect of the physical location. This is solely for change in time. So they come before us, we have that jurisdiction because it's site plan. It is a C variance because it's one of our zoning standards. And we will articulate those standards as we go along. The waivers, you know, we'll read those into, I'll tell you what, we should start when we start them.
Yeah.
Right. We'll bring the applicant forward, if the applicant come forward and have, as you're setting up, have any witness that you, that's going to testify, you think will testify, have something to say, might have something to say. I'm going to have you all, I'm going to swear you all in and moss, you're going to have something to say. Even if you're going to say something from the audience or however, just swear everybody.
Yeah, these three will be called as witnesses in basically in support of the applicant.
Okay, and Rich, I'll also ask you to stand. You solemnly swear the testimony you give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? The answer to that question should be yes?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, I'm going to ask you to do the following. Before you start testifying, don't have a creative script or anything, state your name for the record, spelling your last name. That way, you do need to make a transcript. In the future, transcriber will know who's speaking and be able to follow along. Everybody sit down right now. And if I, if I can counsel, I'd like to.
Liz, if you could, please just stand.
Yeah. I'd like to mark some exhibits that I have, and I see you have some additional exhibits. I would like to mark as A1, the development application form and the checklist as one document, that would be A1. A2 would be four copies, a single copy of a violation notice to the applicant for the borough's zoning and code enforcement officer, that would be A2, that's June 26, 25. Uh, copies of advisement agreement dated April 30th, 2009, as a curtailment of subject property, and that's A3. A4 is the planning board resolution. Memorialized August 9th of 2016. A5 will be the minor site plan revised in 314, 14, principally for resolution compliance, that was four sheets. A6 will be surveyed, not sealed by Charles Sumonte, looks like it is dated July 10, 2025. EB1 will be the engineer's completeness review of July 24, 2025. EB2 is going to be the engineer's review of the application itself, date 14, 2025. Do you have any additional documents you'd like to mark and put those in unless you want to do the next one go along?
We could just mark this, this one exhibit which I have blown up here and Mr. Olson was kind enough to, she printed them out. So all that is, is just a Google Earth of the, kind of showing the surrounding area. Oh, and the date of attribution according to the Google Earth was, it was September 4th of 22. So it's not, it's not a current photo, but it's fair.
Yeah, can you represent that that, there's no additional structures or this act?
I can represent that, yes.
So we'll mark that as A7, you could do that for me counsel, A7. Certainly pass, hand those around to Rich, you can pass those up to the dais for marking them down. That'll be A7, the Google Earth of 9, 4, 22. Any other exhibits?
For now, no, I might have more, but I'll see how we go along in terms of marking them, so I'll hand this up to Rich.
Just to see if we can get these out of the way, I don't think these are going to be, that's it. There are a number of waivers that the applicant is also seeking, these are the checklist waivers, these are not design waivers. Waivers in this instance are, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I got it this way. Checklist item 11, which is the Monmouth County Health Department application, the applicant has seen the waiver from that. Item 12, will serve letters asking for a waiver, yep. 13, environment impact assessment. 14, fresh water wetlands interpretation. 15, list of all federal, state, regional, and municipal approval permits required. 25, stormwater management plans. 26, as-built surveys. 34. 34, title and block, duty type of application, tax map sheet, county, county, municipality, block and lot, street location. 37, schedule of required zoning requirements. 38, approval signature block for board chairman, secretary, and borough engineer. 41, date of current property survey. 52, location of streams, floodplains, wetlands within 200 feet of the project. 54, site identification signs, traffic color, control signs, identification signs. 55, existing proposed site triangles. 65, a lighting plan. The applicant is asking waivers for those. And I ask for engineer, Rich Carradell, fill your name for the purpose of the record.
Yes, however, checking my file, we're missing a page.
Am I missing a page? Did I miss something?
We're missing, it goes through. If you use the page number.
I'm missing, I'm missing page, probably item 16, item 17 through 22.
You missed five, three, five.
17 to 22 and 27 to 33.
Oh, gee. Right, so you missed, you missed five to ten, 16. Let me read those to the rec. I don't, I need, no, no, sorry. Oh, you don't even have to, you have those, Richard?
I'm, I'm looking.
Okay. Yeah, we got your attention. I got you. Here we were trying to use that. Here. Okay. So.
The 17 through 22 and then 27 to.
Through 10.
33.
Asking for a waiver on item. Oh, a cost of 12, 13, obviously. 17, asking for a waiver, you've seen 20 prints prepared by a New Jersey licensed professional engineer. 18, digital copy of the plan. Sounds of them are applicable. 27, photographs of the subject property, actually you don't need a waiver of that, providing those, so if that. 28, excuse me, 29, list of requested design waivers or exceptions, we don't really know what those are at this point. 30, map scale, not less than one inch to 100 feet. 31, EMAP. 32, site subdivision name. 33, the name, signature, license number, the professionals responsible for preparing this manual. See, 43, meets and bounds description showing dimensions of all tangents, radii, floors, angles. 46, size, location of any existing proposed structures with all setbacks. 47, site location of existing structures. 59, solid waste management recycling plan. 60, site layout of all roadways. 61, rating and utility plan. 62, profiles of existing proposed roadways. 63, landscaping plan. 64, soil erosion. If you mentioned 65. Now I ask the engineer if you have an opinion concerning the ability to waive those checklist items?
Uh, yes, in my review letter, I recommended the board waive those items.
Accepting the engineer's recommendation, may I ask for a motion to approve the waivers as I read it to the record?
Yes, I'll, I'll motion to approve those waivers.
Okay, I'll second, second.
Mrs. Bush? Yes. Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Palo?
Yes.
Mr. Gavall?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Antonin? Yes. Mr. Grandinetti?
Yes.
Hey, you're halfway on your way. You've got your waivers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've marked the exhibits, we've shown the witnesses, they get out of your way.
Yeah, thank you. Now, good evening, board members, board professionals. Daniel O'Hern with the firm of Burns, O'Hern and Ugle were located in Red Bank. On behalf of the applicant, Fairhaven Yoga doing business as Poe. You're the board attorney, Mr. Kovats did an excellent job describing the nature of the relief that we're seeking here this evening from the board. So I won't, I won't rehash that, if you save me a little bit of time. Just a little bit of background from the board, as Mr. Kovats alluded to, this is a, we're seeking technically an amendment to a prior site plan from 2016. The applicant was the owner of the property, which is 772 River Road LLC. At the time, they attained approvals to allow the operation, it was a change of use, but to allow an operation of a, basically a yoga studio, and I think it was also a bar, bar studio, bar, another type of fitness program. At the time in 2016, and the name of the business that was going to be operating there was Poe. In 2016, my client, the current Poe, did not own or operate the business. Ms. Sheridan, who's the principal owner of Poe, she acquired the business in or about, I think it was probably like around May of 2019, according to some of the documents I saw. And when she acquired the business, the intent was kind of continue to operate it in the same way, yoga studio, fitness studio. You know, the building consists of two floors for workout and exercise phase, the space, the first floor, currently it has Pilates machines, so it's for Pilates classes. The second floor is more of an open studio for yoga and other type of sculpting type of classes. The, the class that is the subject of this application that we're seeking, the 5:00 AM class, it was not conducted in 2019, it was not a class that was offered, the class was offered several years later. As a result of interest from, you know, various people, members or interested members who want to get up early in the morning to get their workouts in. Teachers, commuters, parents with young kids. You know, sometimes older folks, like, I'm not an older folk, I get up early in the morning and I go, I go to the gym. I like to get up and get early and go, get it out of the way before the day gets in the way. And, and you know, indeed, it is common for, you know, at most, anybody's experience with health clubs and those type of businesses often do open up earlier than your typical business because people for those reasons like to get in and out early. I mean, I know, for example, I go to a gym and it's open early in the morning and there's the people, the commuter crew. So really, in order for those type of businesses to be able to accommodate their customers and their members, I don't want to say it's essential, but it is an important attribute of such a business to be able to offer the early start time. And again, it provides a benefit, you know, to those folks who like to get up early and that's the only time they can get, get into the gym. Now, just for the board's edification, at the time my client started doing the five o'clock classes, she was not aware that the borough had this 6:00 AM ordinance requirement. I mean, had she known, she would have been from the board previously, so. And maybe that's a function of the type of business she, she operates that, it's my understanding that there may be some other businesses in town similar, you know, fitness type of facilities that may have earlier openings, so, but she, she didn't understand, and I'll have her obviously put that on the record, that, you know, this wasn't an intentional violation of the borough's ordinance. She thought she was allowed to operate at 5:00 AM. I think as Mr. Kovats alluded to, in June of this year, my client received a notice of violation from the borough zoning officer directing her to cease the 5:00 AM class until the approval was obtained. That's when I was retained, and that's, you know, now, you know, we started the process of submitting this application. And I also just want to, you know, get out there that I think the, the, you know, the board will probably hear from some public members tonight. You know, there have been noise complaints at this, at this location. I did in fact submit an over request to the, to the police department to get copies of those noise complaints. And there have been complaints filed and they have been investigated by the police department. And it looked like, from the records I had, the first one was back in June of 2024. And the most recent record I had was July 4th, 2025, that, that was the time I had submitted it. So it does appear from those records, and I'll let my client speak to that more, that the complaints appear, I mean, most of the times when the complaints were called in was between 6:00 and 7:00 AM. So it seems that the problem is, is at least the noise issue potentially is emanating from 6:00 AM class and not the 5:00 AM class. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that's based on what I've read in, in the police records. And, but, but in any event, my client understands, she needs to, you know, the, the noise complaints are an issue. And she has taken steps and will continue to take steps to mitigate those complaints. I do want to talk, Mr. Kovats talked about, you know, the C1 hardship variance, the C2. This is, I don't believe this is a C1 hardship variance, it's a C2 flexible variance. But I will point out in terms of the, the structure, this is an older building. So it's, in terms of trying to mitigate the noise, it probably is a little bit more difficult. I mean, I just, I'm using my, I apologize, I'm using my example. I go to a gym in the morning and you walk in the front door and there's no windows, everything's sealed. It's, you know, typical commercial building with not a lot of windows. This building, because it's a, you know, an old, you know, kind of historic, almost home, you know, residential home that was converted perhaps into a commercial building, it has a lot of windows. I mean, upstairs I think has eight, eight, eight total windows and they're big windows. You know, the downstairs has windows also. So in terms of, you know, the mitigating, you know, the sound issues, and, and, you know, it is a fitness studio and they do, you know, periodic, some of the classes require, require, but they, they utilize music. So I just want to make that point, we're not saying, we're not asking for a hardship variance, but this building, which has been approved for this use, is, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a difficult building to try to mitigate the noise. I think as the board is probably familiar, I have the exhibit here, it sits right on River Road, the windows in the front face right out to River Road. I mean, you can see here, this is, this is the building. And then, you know, it, the windows are right there, and then there's windows on this side and windows on this side. This is the back of the building where the, you know, the members enter the building. These little green lines, the only reason I did that was just to kind of show, it's like 200 feet approximately, you know, just to kind of get a flavor of where, you know, this, the surrounding area. So the building is such that it's, you know, the windows are right there, they're right, you know, kind of right in the heart of the downtown. But as I said, my client is working with her instructors to try to eliminate or mitigate the noise issues, including keeping the windows closed. Now, sometimes in the warmer months, you know, that creates a little bit of a problem, but they're keeping the windows closed, turning the music down. Some of the, you guys may, some of the board members, you may see, like, see these classes, the instructors wear little microphones, right? To amplify what they're saying. In those classes where, in the morning where there's been these complaints about the noise, tell the instructors not to use the microphone. My client has also bought two. What's it? Oh, no, it's fine, I just kind of wanted to get a little more.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an opening, I don't want to, I don't want to, but I think you're, you're getting to an area where it's testimony.
No, that's fine, that's fine, I just wanted to give the board a little kind of history, but that, that's fine, we can, we can turn to the, to my client's testimony.
I think she can put it under oath, all those things that you're saying, and we can make those additions if they can.
Yeah. You need to do anything, you don't need to do anything, you need, can you put your name on the record and your address?
Yes, Liz Sheridan.
Yeah.
50 Valentine Street, Long Beach, New Jersey.
And Ms. Sheridan, you're the owner of the applicant Fairhaven Yoga doing business with Poe?
Correct.
When did you become the owner of Poe?
May 2019.
And you acquired it from the prior owner of Poe?
Yes.
Yeah. And did you work for Poe prior to acquiring it, were you instructor?
Yes.
Yeah, so you were familiar with the business and the building and, you know, and how it was utilized, is that correct? Just make sure you, when I ask you, just try to say, yes or no.
Yeah, we can't pick up a, or not, so, use your outside voice, it's also, that, that doesn't amplify anything. Yeah. So we're already here to hear. Use the outsider, use your gym voice like you didn't have any restrictions.
And Poe is the tenant, is a tenant at the property of 772 River Road, right?
Yes.
And who was the landlord?
Mike Riscola.
And you have a lease, obviously, with Mr. Riscola's company, yeah, okay. Have you made any changes to the business since you acquired it?
Yes, it was originally, when I bought over the business, there was, it was being subleased downstairs, interior design store. And then they weren't doing so well, so they left, we took over and added Pilates. And in the past three years, we've been booming and getting extremely popular, very busy. And we have a lot of school teachers, a lot of parents, and so we added the 5:00 AM. Just because people needed it and we've been doing the 5:00 AM for about two years.
Just some, I'll get to the 5:00 AM, but just to, just describe, I explained a little bit to the board, but as Mr. Kovats said, I can't testify. Just to kind of lay out, kind of lay out the building and how you utilize it for your business.
So downstairs, the Pilates machines, eight beds, one instructor. One instructor. And there's no windows open ever down there, um. And it's the same type of music up and down. Uh, except for yoga, when yoga's upstairs, it's obviously different music than the sculpting class called Firebeat. And that's probably our. Most popular class, um, and we were offering that at five AM too. Six AM, seven AM, up until. Seven PM. Every class full, um. Weightless. And just with five AM was a special class, it was, it was a certain community, community, you know, like those group of women. It's the only time they can work out. And losing that is is huge, I mean. I've lost a lot of members, a lot of members I've lost because of that.
So just a little bit back on the on the background, the uh, and what are the the class size, approximate class sizes of the uh. The the five AM class?
Around twenty-five.
Um, how many instructors do you have?
Almost twenty.
And for each class, how many instructors? Is it one instructor per class?
Yes.
So can we focus on, so. Doug, like if if it's a C two variance, right, which is what you call a flexible variance. The standard of group or the this sort of standard of. Judgment that we have to. That we have to evaluate. Is whether that. Variance is of benefit to his community in part, is that correct?
That that's part of, let me, let me read.
Because we need to hear testimony. In in that regard, in order to evaluate the application fairly, so all of the information that. You're giving us is certainly great background information. I have some questions about. Sort of what, you know, you bought the business in twenty nineteen, um. I I guess didn't know of an ordinance or didn't know of this ordinance, um. And so I wanna sort of go over that timeline. Um, but but just in terms of the the standard that has to be met or the. You know, the evidence that we need to hear in order to make a judgment, that's, that's what we need to get to.
I I can certainly give you those standards, but I I do. Question the chair, the athletes should be able to present, chart maybe how it benefits the community because. The. The C two variance. Basically, the court has described it as. Not a variance because of the physical limitations of the land. C one is physical limitations of the land. You've got property that's non-performing because it's bound by a river to the back, you don't have enough property. You know, you've got existing structures. It's not a hardship variance. C two variance. The Supreme Court, when they were describing it, said definition, no C two variance should be granted merely. Because the purpose of the owner will be advanced. The grant of approval must actually benefit the community in that it represents a better zoning alternative for the property. Better zoning alternative for the property. The focus of the C two case then will not be on the characteristics of the land. That in light of current zoning requirements create a hardship on the owner. Uh, and warranty relaxing of the standards, but on the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity. For improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community. You know, and that those. Benefits substantially outweigh any detriment. Not a little bit substantially outweigh any detriment. So you're gonna have to, you in a sense have to place yourself in a position of being a council member and saying, okay. Why do we have this restriction from, you know. Eleven PM to. You got ready to record for eleven PM to six AM. We don't want you inviting people onto the property. That's not to mean that, and this doesn't address, and I won't get too far into it, because I don't wanna get into councils arguments. You know, when you have a loading, we have unloading, those kinds of things, it's not inviting people on, right? So you're gonna have some commercial operations in the morning. But this is really focused on, at least the language of this ordinance is. Invites or permits customers or public use, visitation or occupancy. Shall operate, shall not operate between the hours. No business or commercial activity which invites or permits customers or public use, visitation or occupancy. Shall operate between the hours eleven PM and six AM, except. And I think we're, we agree. That only, only if the municipal agency allows, you're not claiming that you're a highly regulated industry.
That's correct.
So you you come here for that belief and it's, it's. While the building, I guess, is important on on those kinds of things. You've got to say to yourself, well, is this a different place? That the reasons that the meeting of council had to anticipate, it would be a better zoning alternative to let this property begin. In this incident, I believe the advocate is asking for five AM, we have to lock that in.
That's correct.
And Rich, we we all agree. That there's no other, like, this doesn't fall under C one, there there's, this is a C two. variance discussion, correct, based on your review of the application?
Well, I reviewed it as the engineer, but from a planning perspective, yes.
Apropos what what the board has been saying. Can you kind of describe how, you know, the benefits that you feel and that you, in in terms of feedback from the customer? The benefits that your business, particularly, and and speak to health, health businesses in general. Provide to the community and to your members.
I mean. Poe has become a place, it's not just to workout, but I think people find it more of like a community. And they hang out for a little bit after class, or they, you know, they make new friends, a place they can. Especially after COVID happened, you know, it was a place that was just booming and they could feel better about themselves and provide better for. Whether they're a parent, friend, um. A business owner, I think we've also brought local business to. Surrounding businesses, um, with all our clients. And that's a huge positive.
And there's obviously the health benefits, correct? I mean, you're 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 providing health benefits. Are there, your experience, does the. Your type of of classes, do they provide mental health benefits also to individuals?
Yes, huge. Especially with the infrared heat, um, upstairs in the sculpting classes in the yoga studio.
And maybe just speak to the board, you started to talk about it, but, you know, why? You know, why the five AM for uh, class is important to the, to your members, but also why it's important to the community. At large, to be able for a business like yours to be able to offer the five AM class?
I think. Our classes upstairs are unique and. There's, I mean, there's gyms around there, open five AM lifetimes, such, you know, places like that, they don't offer the classes that we do and. That infrared, the the heated class and the teachers and, you know. That that type of workout is not really found elsewhere and. I think that's huge, especially at five AM. And this class that are similar in, say, Seabright, Middletown, they don't have five AMs and. There's excitement, here's our five AM, but they. We just have this special, um, these, the these women that come are just. They love the five AM and they need it and. Without it, they can't come and they either cancel the membership or go elsewhere.
I mean, have you had members cancel their membership?
Yes.
Okay, how many members have canceled since you stopped offering the five AM class?
Around ten, ten, eleven, twelve.
And have they told you the reason why they stopped? Is it because they?
They can't, you know, they can't make it vary, um, they can't get to work on time, they have a long commute. Uh, either, or their husband or their partner, that's how it works, so they they have no, they have no chance to, any other times, um.
Ask a question, there's just some of the other uh, businesses in the area, whether it's Fairhaven, Rosen, Middletown. Or some of the larger places like Lifetime, do you know? Uh, do you know, are they opening at five AM? I can tell you that Spire opens at five AM in Rosen, so that's like kind of.
Yeah.
Direct comp, I think, a little, there were more personal training, it's not classes at five AM, but. What about, um. You know, it's a place to see brighter or 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 elsewhere, that are they also. Allowed to open at five AM and choose not to, or are they limited to, you know, based on the zoning of those towns? I I guess I'm trying to understand what the, what the community outside just Fairhaven allows.
I know Middletown offers five AM at Hot and Soul, and I used to teach there. And I used to attend the five AM classes, and that's right by Whole Foods. And that was very popular, it's like a bar, sculpting, hot yoga studio. Um.
Where'd you say those were?
Middletown.
A Middletown, right?
I believe AB Mall Beach opened at five AM.
About, what is the E D's business in Fairhaven, right? That's six AM?
Seven AM.
Seven AM? I'm assuming like Lifetime is four, open it super early?
Yes, Lifetime opens at four thirty. Fly's glasses five AM, yep.
If you haven't been sworn, I don't want to take your testimony in the audience. If you have been sworn, I'd like you to come forward and state your name for purposes, correct?
Or people like, yeah, if there's.
Yeah, folks, if you're gonna testify anything, you gotta be sworn in, so if, please do, because we want everybody, we want the community.
But I don't wanna disrupt the council's orderly presentation.
Yeah, we we can wait, yes.
Yeah.
I I didn't, I didn't see who that was, who was speaking.
I I didn't know, I got a word with you, I mean, the.
So so the, so, you know, when we talk about the community at large. You you know, so so you started that, when did you start the five AM classes?
Uh, two years ago.
So twenty twenty-three, okay. And when did you, when did you become aware of the 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 five AM rule? Or the the rule that there's six AM? When, when did that, when did you learn of that?
When I had the email from the Joe Mule.
And when was that?
Uh, that was in June, that that was the, I think, the exhibit that, um, A two, which, um, that's a violation notice from, um.
So you didn't, you've been operating for two years at five AM?
Correct.
Okay, and didn't know you weren't allowed to operate at five AM until like a couple of months ago?
Yeah.
And you started to receive complaints, when, when the, there were, there were also two summons?
Well, you wanna, do you wanna address A two as to the status of the violations notice? Maybe just go through A ten and combine.
Yeah, that's fine. So, um.
Got A two, right?
I I have it here, yes. I I have it, okay.
Basically, representative, A two is a June twenty-six, twenty-two, five letter. Uh, team Sheridan, signature of, you know, you, um. Basically outlining several ordinance sections, I don't know whether there are separate violations or. Well, you just walk the client.
Yeah, well, the the ordinance section is the, um. Well, the the first one is the development permit, he's just citing, you know, what she had been, of what what the the property had previously been, um. Uh, approved for, um. I I did not see this in the uh, the resolution approval in terms of an hours of operation, but according. To the this letter, it said that it was approved from six AM to nine AM. But that is not in the resolution of approval. Now, that might have been put on the record and maybe they have, there's some other record of that, but.
You may find that, so your standard conditions are complying with all borough ordinances.
Understood.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Understood.
That may have been.
But that that we know is, so that that's the ordinance section, just the the development permit, so, um, you know, we're here seeking relief basically to.
So there, I'm gonna lead you through it so we get to the, um, it's one ordinance violation, it's one municipal matter, it's point in time, it's not multiple. Multiple violations.
It's one violation, yes.
And the status of that right now is what hasn't been resolved, it's being held in abeyance.
It it it's being held in abeyance, but it probably should come from, uh. Ms. 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 Sheridan, so the the board attorney is asking, you you received this. Notice of violation, um, it 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 did make reference to. A, uh, the the borough's noise ordinance, have you received a. Summons or ticket from the municipality regarding an alleged violation of the noise ordinance?
Yeah, I I appeared in court about a month, a month ago and. They told me to work on it, um. Which I have and I'm due in court, I think the second week of September, again.
So you're reporting back as to whether or not you've gotten leave from this board and or what you're doing to obey.
Correct.
Because whether you start at five, six, seven, you can still have noise files.
That that is correct. I think what she needs to report back to the municipal court is that she's making efforts to obey. The the noise, because the the ticket. The ticket, she didn't re- receive a a citation, she received this notice of vi- violation. From the zoning officer regarding opening it at five AM with a cease notice to to cease operations, which she did. The ticket, the ticket that she received municipal court is for violation of the no- noise ordinance, so they really are two, two separate things.
Okay, can you review what you answered? That's your understanding?
Yes.
So nothing's happening right now with any violation, any others, any summonings. Until September, at which point we'll report back.
Correct.
Yeah, just a question in terms of the timeline, so. So I'm looking at a. I'm looking at a ticket from August seventh, six twenty-four in the morning, is that the most recent ticket that was. Given by one of the police officers here?
Correct, yes, yeah.
So at that time, in the last month, when you were asked to stop, would you continue at five AM?
No, no, that was the six AM.
This was before. You were told to stop at five AM.
No, I just, I saw that those are tickets for noise violations. She she got the the notice of violation A two, which is from the zoning officer.
Was for a.
That was for. Correct.
Six AM.
When she got that, she stopped operating at.
At six AM, at five AM, so this is six AM ordinance, this is.
Yes, well, this is, no, that's a noise. So that was a noise. Yeah, as I, as I noted. Yeah, as I, as I noted, yeah, I just wanna make sure we're talking about the same thing, so. The ticket that she got was for violation of the.
Five AM start.
No, it was for notice of the violation of the. Noise ordinance, that's my understanding.
I think the noise ordinance starts at seven thirty AM.
That's correct, that's right.
So you can get a ticket at six AM, five or six, or even seven, ten AM.
Yeah, you can get it, that's right, it 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 can, you could get it. Correct, that's correct, yeah.
What what is different in the five AM class and the six AM class? You say they're all, this Firebeat is the same?
It's the same class. Five AM has just never been. Given. Any. Noise violation issues, and then they just happen to be a little more quiet, depending on the teacher, it just.
Certainly like an opportunity, I promise we'll open to the public. Just square in, okay?
Yeah.
Just be patient with us for now, Rich is letting the applicant make their application.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Going back to the council, you're talking about what, um. What that, what means of you rotating to obey the noise, if there is some way you can insulate or windows closing, like, you know.
We haven't opened the windows at all since the noise violation, since the first ticket. And. We lowered the music. Significantly, we we don't use headsets, I'm one of the teachers at six AM and. It it's hard, but we don't use a headset and. We've, I've ordered three panels for the front windows. The soundproof panels, they should be here by next week, we order them, they're custom. Made, so they're super expensive and they've taken a while to get here, but they should be arriving. Next Tuesday. So we'll put those in the front windows and. That's the best we can do right now, that's all we could do, yeah.
Kind of just, you and you, you have, and you're, and the windows, the two windows that face east that are, I think, closest to that building, I think it's seven seventy-four. Don't you have?
Panels up there.
You already have panels in there, correct?
Hmm.
And and you feel that they've been effective?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so are those the, those panels that you have in those two windows, that's, you're you're buying more of those to put in the front window?
Yes.
And you said those are custom panels?
Yes.
And they're on order?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What do those panels do specifically? What are they rated for, when when they serve, obviously it's noise panels, but what?
They keep a sound coming, going out. So they're right, they're literally the size of the window, you push them in and it just sounds.
So they can in and out depending on the class, or you keep?
No, they stay in.
They stay in the entire time.
Yeah, I I actually. Yeah, I, I actually, if I could just, maybe I have a photo, I don't know if that helps, but, um. I, i- if I could just show you to that, that document, just, just for the record, just, can you, oh, I'm gonna ask you, what?
Oh.
What is that?
That's a soundproof panel on the window.
Okay, and what, is that the second floor?
Yes.
Yeah.
And will we mark that?
Yeah, mark that.
Mark that as A eight?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just hand that.
Yeah, read into the rest what that is.
Specific rating, I mean, like, from a decibel reduction perspective, like, what does that? I guess I'm just trying to understand like the differential between having the panel in the window and not having a panel. What is the performance of those panels?
We've done tests, um, outside and when we put these in. Near the alleyway, you're down the street, you can't hear anything outside, from that side. And it keeps the noise, keeps the noise inside. We've done decimalings too and.
I have a question, so. You, you bought the studio in nineteen, it looks like all the violations started twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. Like what changed that all of a sudden it's that much louder? Are the classes a lot like, have we, uh, maybe it's just people complaining, but.
We've added like a different style of class, that's about it, and it's become more popular, but nothing's changed in terms of the volume, it's the same. Phone everyone uses.
Maybe that's where we should go then. Describe. When you have five AM class, or the patient, number of participants, what that atmosphere was like?
Why? The five AM is more quiet than six AM, just because in terms of, I think, just five AM in general, it just feels like, you know, it's early and.
Okay, so that.
It's more laid back, oh, twenty five.
Twenty five?
Depending on who, you know, some people cancel, varies. No, di- different instructors.
No, but one, she's asking one instructor, yes, one instructor, yeah.
Total twenty six people in the room. What's, what's happening by way of sound, what's happening by way of activity?
Uh, Mr. Cobats, I actually have the, one of the instructors from the five AM class, so I wanted to call, that might be.
I wanna take over your, I don't wanna take up, but I'm just trying to.
No, I. Understood, and, and I, I don't know if anybody has more questions.
The evidence of community benefit, right? And so I have some questions about, you know, um, so the parking as well, so there was a parking agreement that was supposed to be signed. As a condition of one of the, I think that was in Rich's review, right? And so that there's also been some parking claims, Rich, have there been, or?
There's two parking agreements and an access season agreement. The parking agreement. Which we have executed was between seven seventy four and seven seventy two.
So that was executed?
That's the combined part.
Okay, so that agreement got executed. I thought I read something that said there was an agreement that wasn't executed.
Agreement is for the property to the west, which is seven seventy. In order to access those parking spaces. They're basically landlocked, they only have access through the existing driveway at seven seventy two. And I believe one of the spaces in the back along the river of the property. Kind of overlaps onto both properties, so that was sort of the purpose.
It was like a minor encroachment.
So there was, so there was an agreement that was, because the original, the approval in twenty sixteen. Required that agreement to be signed, did it not?
Correct, and the, my understanding is the owner of the property had been trying to seek that approval for that, that signature. And was unable to do so, um, and, and we do some emails to that effect.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, the, the, they've been, the, the, and I, I don't represent the landlord, but the landlord, uh. Mr. Gardella, you know, raised this issue, um, I did get in touch with the landlord and, uh. He said that he's just been getting not any cooperation from the owner of seven seventy. Um, but the parking has been functioning, you know, it, I don't like that really since two thousand sixteen without the agreement. I also, as I understood that agreement, it would also benefit, there were benefits to the owner of seven seventy two, not just to.
It would be, it, it's a typical shared.
Share, shared.
Yeah, time you have, you know, for, for a down.
But in terms of spaces, it didn't really, I, I think it just added that one, like, half of space for an encroachment. I think they had an agreement about when. Poe wasn't open, that, you know, it, it, his, his business or whatever business there could use it, so, but that has not. Been signed. I was in contact with Mr. Gardella about that. I, I said I wasn't really aware of that cuz I wasn't involved and. Uh, I don't represent the landlord, but.
Oh, are there, I, I know we have all the, the police department. Information, were, were there complaints about parking as well? Just speaking to community at large and, and sort of like.
So. As your attorney mentioned, the parking lot in question is functioning as far as we can tell, as per the site plan. The issues we've dealt with in the past and we've talked to the owners of Poe, um. We've gotten complaints from adjacent business owners that their customers are parking in their parking lots.
Okay.
So, although it's not necessarily a zoning matter, we're called out there, we, we do our best to work with the business owner, at least make them aware of the situation. And they, they've said that they've talked to their.
Right, and so you, you message your clients, let them know if you can't park here.
Some, just to be honest, some of the, some of the adjacent businesses are, there's no agreement, but they don't. They don't call us or, or ask, hey, why are these folks parking here? We, we see it. They do park in our municipal lot, they do use the streets, you know, river roads, some of the side roads. And then obviously, some people walk or bike to the business, so, I mean, that's for you guys to explain, but that's what I've observed.
So how many total clients do you have? Roughly, like, signing, do you offer monthly membership?
Yeah, memberships, yeah.
So monthly membership plus, you know, walk-ins or?
Six hundred.
At heart, roughly?
Five hundred, six hundred.
Okay. And are they mostly fair given, most residents?
All over.
All over.
They come from Brooklyn.
Uh, do, would you say, I mean, there were some, um.
Tons from Fairhaven, biking, yes.
Yes, the people do bike to your, uh, the people walk to the studio.
Yeah.
That, where, now you're.
Would you be able to venture a guess how many of the five to six hundred are fair residence?
We tried to do a breakdown, we switched our services that we use for people assigned classes, so my accountant, I tried to find, but there's no addresses, so. Three hundred, two hundred?
Yeah, I, I bet you're guessing that it's mostly. By and large, local, you know, participants that, that, oh, cuz I realize you might have people coming from the parkway, but I heard somewhere once that, like. People don't travel for workout experiences more than like five minutes or ten miles or something like, so, split that number or whatever, but like, I'm guessing that. Poe probably has a very, very local customer base.
Yes.
Like that, as you talk about, like, it could not be a benefit to community or, or standpoint for communities, right, so.
Yeah, and, and just back, back on the parking issue, I mean, is it fair even, the distance that you use by area?
Yes, okay, yeah, yeah.
Just on a pack, parking issue, have you taken any proactive steps? You know, I think there was some questions about it, but just so it's on the record. Proactive steps to make sure your customers, members are aware that they shouldn't use certain spaces, um.
Yes, we've put signs up on doors. We literally stop class to take the, whoever's parked in the wrong spot will tell them to come out with their car. We, I've bought cones for all the, uh, neighboring businesses that have issues with the parking and bought them cones. And I put them in their spots and no one can drive in part there, um. Yeah.
And has that? That was eliminated some, yeah, some of the parking issues that, that, that have been alluded to.
Yes.
I, I mean, just for the record, is, as Mr. Greil said, it is, I think there were nineteen spaces required under this, under time to site plan. And there's fourteen, and that's, that's the existing, but. A- and, and at the, the five AM class, I mean, I just, you know, for the record, at, at five AM in the morning, I would suspect that, that the town isn't as busy or full. At five AM, right, for terms of parking as it might be at seven, seven thirty, when more people are filling into town, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So, does it, I, I, we have a member of the Fairhaven Police Department, does anyone have any questions? Cuz I know that they wanna, needs to get back on to control. So, does anyone have any questions about?
Uh, I, I do kind of about noise complaints. So you basically have roughly, at least we'll be on a prime of ten noise complaints from September twenty four. Through August twenty five, so over the year, you've had roughly ten plates. My question is, currently, where do you stand in as far as, like, do your windows never open anymore?
Correct.
And then, obviously, you said you're putting the panels to the windows.
Yes.
And then, I mean, you, you keep saying you love the music, love the music, but maybe you're still getting noise complaints, do you just stop the music? Like, or how low is the music?
It's a lot lower than it used to be. We didn't stop it completely, no.
And you said no headsets, has it this moment, again, has it this moment?
We've stopped the headsets since the noise complaints.
Since the first noise complaint or somewhere along the way?
Since the, the one back in. Three months ago, one month in?
Since the violation, Larry?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
With, with your permission, I know you're not done with the presentation by, by a long shot, we interrupt because we do.
Absolutely.
Who's come in by board with some information concerning, I guess, the community's experience, we decide, he's gotta get back home and, and you already have to take testimony.
Absolutely.
So, swear you're in, so I'm gonna swear a testimony, you give the full, all the truth, all the truth, not even the truth. You state your name, spell your last name, correct?
Michael Richards, R I C H A R D S.
We're taking a look at the property Poe at seven seventy two Main Road. We're going to block fifty two, lot, are you, are you familiar with the yoga studio?
I am.
Okay, can you tell us your experience with, with your ordinance violations, noise violations? And I, I wanna really just limit it to, to twenty twenty five at this point in time.
Correct.
Does the applicant is basically, is that a testimony that's subject to the violation of, didn't realize certain ordinance? And you give us about your experience with that, cuz I.
In general, for the last year, like, the, you guys have, uh, we've probably had about ten noise complaints. Um, I've been there a handful of times, I've only issued one, there's been times where we've got a plate, I've gone there, and it's not. Reported, it's not as loud as what was, what was reported, um, but they have received about five citations for the noise. Most of the calls, if not ninety-five percent of them, it's between six and seven. Um, I believe I've only seen one time where they were called prior, between five and six. Um, so, again, I don't know about the whole extra hour for them being opening, but for the most part, when we get called, it's between six and seven.
Any things from a community problem or is concerning policy?
No, not that I know of.
We're gonna grab any additional questions from the officer.
Uh, as far as the noise complaints, is it multiple callers or is it, is it?
Um, from my understanding, it's usually the same caller, callers, um, it's not. But again, I don't know about the other officers that are responding.
I don't get it, is that the red line on the?
That's one, that's where, one of the callers from on the, on the, yeah, okay, that's correct.
That calls to my one additional question. How many, how many? I know there's commercial properties along this road, but there are also residential properties above the commercial properties. If you use an idea of residents or locations of, of residents. I'd say either side of this particular site, it's the rear and across the street.
So like, as you can see here, so these are the businesses, um, and then these are residential houses, and that's where, I'm assuming. When I responded, that's where the noise complaints are coming from, um, because that's where the sound travels from the windows of the front of the business.
Any other concerns that you're aware of, or information about this application which you'd like to present to the board?
Uh, no, like I stated, I, I, I've never, um, responded there between the hours of five and six. Um, and when I responded there between six and seven, um, there was a time when it was loud and I ended up issuing a citation. Other times, it's not overly loud, or, um, like I said, I'll speak with her, other workers at the place and they'll, they'll turn it down or close the window. You know, fix it, but again, obviously, it's an ongoing issue, but.
The, the, the people that are, you, you know, the, the instructors and, and those on site.
Hmm.
In representation of the business have been responsive.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
The world examination, right? Any questions?
I, just one question, you said that the time when it was loud, you issued the, um, I think you issued a violation, do you remember when that was?
Um, I do not recall.
That's okay.
It was within the last couple of months.
Got it.
I mean, the dates are on.
Yeah, yes, I, I don't, yeah.
Of when, there's two, I guess, two citations either.
I believe there was one issued earlier this month, that wasn't by me, and I think, um, mine was probably, I would say about two months ago.
Thank you.
It's like June nineteenth.
Okay.
And Richard, check.
Yeah.
Yeah, says, can we order a borrow songs as you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a question for the officer? We'll get back up, we actually.
Thank you, thank you, officer.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Oh, of course, that was helpful.
I mean, a- again, as, you, you, you know, in terms of the, the standard through which. We need to evaluate this, I mean, I, I think we need to hear testimony as to the benefits at large to the community, right? Like, I think in order for us to render a decision, that's the, the lens under which we have to sort of, you, you know. Go through this, so I'm happy to hear from the Pope, right?
Yeah, I, 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 I just have a couple more witnesses and, and I think.
Application, presentation, test.
Yeah, okay.
These agents had instructors that he called.
Yes.
That can give us an atmosphere of what the site is like and try to, try to, and, and I guess the focus is. Why this business is different five to six, as opposed to simply starting at six?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe you get a feel for what happens on campus or on, at the site during the class. Describe that experience from the board so that they can see why it is that this business is somehow different than any other business. And it, it really is between five and six, I mean, because you can do everything that you wanna do, but those, unless you tell me differently. That there's something different, other than commuter and timing, that can be done at six. So whether the board's gonna have that fairly narrow focus, and I know that seems unfair, but I think that's how the board is gonna focus. But I think the first step is, give us an idea of what happens with your early morning class and why. The additional earlier start has the benefit. I, I, I have no doubt, and again, I'm not trying to refrain your argument or, or do anything. Trying to genuinely help with your proofs. There is no doubt that an early morning workout at six has good benefits, all of those things. All those things, I don't think anybody in the board disputes, it's that additional hour. That makes it very important and vital as to why we should change the rules that merit, cuz we, that's what we have to do. We have to abide by mayor and council, we need to guard that start, unless there are substantial proofs, you know. Substantially outweigh the detriment, cuz we can all talk about the detriment, we've identified. Additional noise potentially maybe starting earlier, although, yes, history, what your applicant has testified, they really didn't have that much noise at five. But if you really do regiment it, you're gonna get ten, you're gonna get ten, eleven or twelve more people back, I'm assuming. Again, I don't wanna tell you how to do your business, cuz I, I know you know your business inside out.
But we've all, we've lost more than, those are just members we lost, we've lost twenty five. Plus people, there's, there's package orders to just monthly members, we've lost ten, twelve, they've canceled their memberships. Package orders, still have their packages, they just haven't can, they didn't cancel anything, but they're not coming anymore. So just adding that.
Thank you for that clarification, right now I have, obviously, I misunderstood or misinterpret what you're told.
Yes.
Thank you.
Why don't we, um, um, unless the board has any other questions of, of Ms. Sheridan, I'd like to just call my next witness, if that's okay?
I actually have one more question. I, I guess, I'm just curious, why did it take a year of, uh, violations, basically, to start drinking? You know, soundproof, like, why didn't you do that when it started? Did you do an outreach to the community? Did you?
We put the two panels up and then things were quiet for a while and. The five AMs were never, they never got noise violations, there was always a six. Um.
When you can, just so the, the board member, you, you, and we've had a little testimony, that the panels you put up on the eastern side of the building. When did you do that?
A year and a half ago.
And that was because of potential noise concerns?
Yes.
And was that because of the building that's located?
The right of us.
Yeah, seven seven.
And he was thought of it, and he's like, oh, great, you know, I don't hear anything anymore, so then. We, we're like, okay. We were like, okay, great. It was awesome. And then just recently, we started getting. The. Violations and. We started closing the windows. I mean. Um.
Are you, any, any other questions? So I'm gonna. That's fine. Yeah, well, I'm gonna swear, I'm gonna have to swear you in. I want you to come up as a, as a witness.
Okay.
I just think she's having a hard time articulating to you guys, cause it's a little overwhelming for her. Um, okay, my name.
Excuse me, stand please.
Yeah.
So I'm just for the testimony, you can give the full, for the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
As you state your name, the record spelling, your last name.
Katie Keenan, K E E N A N.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna help speak about the community, cause I understand that that's. One of the most important things about this variance. So I'll give a little backstory. I've been a member of Poe since. She took over in two thousand nineteen. I'm a twenty year resident of Rumson. I have four children. Um, one that I just sent to college, my oldest, my youngest is in second grade. And I started working for Poe a year and a half ago, uh, April of twenty four. And then my job kind of merged into the front desk manager, cause we have a bunch of front desk staff. She has twenty instructors and there's about. Twelve to thirteen front desk people. Um, and so speaking for community, I know that when I started, my friend brought me there. And since then, I've met more. Parents of my children's friend, like, you know, in the community, Fairhaven, Rumson. My daughter, who just went to college, uh, when she was sixteen, she started going there and she brought. Made so many friends, local friends, cause she went to Trinity Hall. And next you know, they're all helping out, asking if they could, you know. Do the firebeats in the PM and then she even added like a nighttime class, because a lot of these girls were just enjoying it. Um, and anytime any of the local schools come and do the PTO fundraisers. I mean, Liz is the first to give a five pack and help. You know, the local schools with the, all of our those events like that. Um, she's a dog lover, so she does a lot of the events for the animals. But I think she'd be more than willing to do any community. Outreach that would be required, like anything that somebody suggested. I don't think she would ever say no. Um, but as for the amount of local people. It is well over half of the people coming are Little Silver, Fairhaven, Rumson. It's familiar faces, a lot of moms, and they're the morning people. You get the. You get older, you get moms in the more early morning, and you get moms that are working early morning and night. Then you get the stay at home moms during the day, and then you get the twenty year olds mixed in. Um. I think that I I just wanted to say that, um, what else can I say? Also, um, the parking. Um, I am so on top of, like, I've tried to be on top of that, because anytime um, the neighboring real estate office would call. We would find out who it is and tell them it's not okay. Write notes on the windows of the doors. If somebody parks in Edward Jones. We put um, the cones up. And we have, we've stopped classes and we're constantly telling people, cause we don't, we're like, we don't want that to reflect on us. Because like she said, we do have people coming from far away. And you guys all know social media and some of the younger instructors, that's like how they build their brand, right? So then they catch somebody, somebody sees their TikTok and they're like, oh, I came from Staten Island because I just had to take that class. That's not the majority of who we have there. It's not. We have local residents. A lot of them ride their bike in the morning or walk. Um. And that's, it's really nice and it's nice to see familiar faces and then you form friendships that. It helps with carpools and all of that, cause next thing you know, you see somebody and you're like, oh, okay, you're, oh, your kid's in my class. Okay, and then. You form bonds, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but I just thought I wanted to help speak about the community, because. I'm there every day and I I see the comings and goings. And she's. A mom at beach, but I'm a little closer, cause I'm right next to her in Rumson, so. Well, if you have questions for me, but I just wanted to share.
No, that that was all. We did.
Any questions, Eric Ward? I I don't have any questions. I mean, so so this speaks to. Oh, go ahead.
Were you working when they did have five AM classes?
My hours are eight to twelve. I am the daytime.
So when they had the five AM classes. You were not on again?
No, I am not.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have some back here that also.
All gonna get a chance.
Thank you.
You've gotta go.
Thank you.
Alex, thank you.
Yeah.
Alexis Campbell, if you could.
She was screaming since morning.
Yes.
But I do need you to spell your last name correct.
Alexis Campbell, C A M P B E L L.
I always ask that, it's the easy one.
Um, I'm the five AM teacher. So I teach the five AM, uh, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
You did.
I did.
You're accepting that you.
Yes.
So they were, how many days a week?
Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Yeah. Uh, just to give you a little background on me, um. I'm Middletown resident lifelong. Um, I was a teacher in Rumson. I taught at Dean Porter for thirteen years. I what I taught third grade and second grade. I was the Forestale field hockey coach and the track and field coach. Um, after my third child, I resigned and that's when I started to get back into fitness and I became a client of Poe. And I fell in love with it. Then I um, became really good friends with Liz and I started training. At that point, she was looking to bring the trainers on. Um, so I trained with Liz for six months. Um, and I got my instructor um, certification. And I began teaching there. And I've been there for three years. And when uh, I taught different times, I teach five days a week. And when I started, you know, I was teaching various different times. And then um. You know, I brought many friends there and actually, one thing I love about it is that I now have old students. That come into Poe and they go, oh, my gosh, Miss Massa, I was your student. And now I'm teaching them Poe. So I have kids that I taught, you know, when they were little, that are now clients at at Poe. Um, so you know, that's really amazing to to see them walk through the door. Um. So the five AM started when there was just a, you know, a need for it. A lot of these teachers, which I used to be, that I could never get to a class before, you have to go teach. A lot of nurses, um, you know, a lot of, you know, women that work at Riverview, they come and then they go right to work. Um, commuters, people that have to get on the ferry, uh, you know, after class, they get in the shower and they go. So, um, firebeat, the actual class, just so you kind of have a gist of it. And just so you know, I I wake up at three forty five, I get to the studio probably around four thirty. Um, and then, you know, uh, I get everything, you know, set up. And it's very quiet at that time, you know, like and the the.
What are you, what are you getting set up?
Uh, you know, just myself, mats, equipment. Um, and then, you know, once the class starts, then starts.
How many people show up in the class?
I mean, it varies.
Give me the variance. How high do I?
From ten people to twenty five. So it could be almost full to full.
How long is that classroom?
Fifty minutes.
Fifty five zero?
Mm-hmm.
And during that time, whether or not you're searching. You have an idea of. What kind of sound, sound levels?
So there's music the whole time playing. Um, you know, you start out with a warm up. Um, which is consists about like two songs that you go through a warm up. Uh, consists of like, you know, a lot of planks, jumping jacks, um, cardio. And then we switch to gliders, which are like, you know, like sliders on your legs, do a little different leg. Uh, exercises, bands, so we use bands on our legs. Um, then it's arms, usually for three songs. Um, you know, and then we get down to the floor on our mats and we do a boot section. Um, right and left, and then we get to abs and then we're done. It's full body, fifty minutes. Uh, the workout's hot, as you know, so you know, everyone is very sweating a lot and. It's hot and people, you know, go in and out of the barn door and go into the AC in the hallway and cool off and that's it.
Do you?
For for the limitations? Where you liked, what kind of amplification, amplification by way of the music, from your speakers, whether. I'm just, I'm trying to create a record for you.
Right.
Sense, so I have an idea of what's.
There's a system in the studio that the music comes out of.
Okay.
Um, and then there we, you know, would wear a mic. And that's really, you know, the, if, if you, actually, I I always tell people, if you've never experienced Poe, you have to. Cause it's, it's the nature of the class and why people love it so much, that it, the music is a big part of it. And it was never, it's, it's, it's a positive part of it. And especially at that time, when you can go to a class, I'm sure if you've ever spent a workout, that's something that's gonna get you going and motivate you at that early of a time, you know. That's why people love it so much. And it's, it's fast paced, it's. You feel like you accomplished so much, you know, you sweat. I mean, and it's positive, you know, then that, that's what this all is about. You know, it was never meant to upset anybody or do anything like that. It's, but it's a big part of it, you know? And I've never, I am very, you know. Follow the rules and I've, I've, as as was said, it was really never during the five AM that there is an issue and I, and if there ever was, I would. You know, I'm very controlled when I teach and I'm um.
On one of the various days during a week is relatively, obviously, there's a change set from anywhere from ten to twenty five. But it's usually the ten same twenty five that are coming, each one of your classes during the same.
Like, do I have a consistent clients?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I've had the same. Girls come.
So it may vary between ten and twenty five, but it's still the same ten and twenty five.
Yeah, they, I mean, it's, it's been devastating to those girls that can't come. Cause it's just the the regulars that just. Go to that time. And for me too, you know, I have three kids and for my, that's my schedule. You know, I get up before my whole family. I go, you know, my husband's home with them. I come back, everyone's still sleeping. So if you're, you know, for me, it's like, you know, that's the time I teach. A lot of, you know, a lot of people can't do that time. I, I can. You know, so it's worked out wonderful for me.
Once you know teaching a five AM class, what were you teaching?
I teach uh, Monday at ten forty five, uh, Tuesday at nine thirty and then uh, Friday at nine thirty five.
At this point, do you see the same ten to twenty five people coming to Poe?
That were in my class?
Were in your class?
No.
Okay.
No, maybe. One of the the questions has been asked about, you know, the distinction between the five AM class or six AM class or seven AM class. You know, what, in your opinion or view, in your experience as the instructor, what's unique about the five AM class? And why is that, you know, it's it has?
I think it's just the, the people that get up for that time, you know, it's just like, you're kind of making like a really big extra effort to get there. And it's like, no messing around. Like, everyone is there to work out. They have places to go. They have things to do. And that's it. Like, and it's, you know, everyone leaves happy. People wouldn't be getting up that early and going there if they didn't want to. And it's a big part of their routine and it's positive. I mean. You know, it's. It's.
Do you, do you leave after the five?
Do I, yeah.
Yeah. So you know, you can't speak to the six AM class per second?
No. I mean, I le, I leave right after that, you know.
I'm just, you know, trying to figure out the difference between the five and six as far as like, all the complaints are happening at six, not five, so.
Right.
You know, you guys listen to jazz music and they're listening to metal?
I mean, we all have the same. We've, I.
Do you, do you open the windows at five AM?
I mean, now we don't know, we don't dare open a window.
We're, we're talking about. We're not talking about the benefits to the, the, the standard is the benefits to the community, right? And I wanna get to that. And we're hearing from, you know, in the owner of the business, two employees of the business. And the two employees of the business are not fair even, right? So it's like, what is, like, I wanna get to that. If there's a part of the presentation that speaks directly to the benefit to the community, right? To the Fairhaven community. We're talking about overturning ordinance. Or granting an exemption to a, you know, ordinance that was passed by the governing body, right? So it's like, there's a standard here that, like, I'm, I just, we need to hear. Things that speak directly to that standard.
Yeah, and you can carry benefit to the Poe community. Like, you guys are your own community.
So are you, well, like, I, I host a um, cystic fibrosis charity class every year. I mean, we've done charity things. Uh, is that what you're saying, like how?
Right, I, I mean, that, that's all, but I, I don't, like, I don't see how allowing five AM class would negate doing things like that, right?
It just add, it just adds, and those people that can't go to any other time, that's the time they go. So I mean, you're, you're taking a person, you know, you're, that can't go. Cause they have to go to work. And by the time a mom comes home and they're, have to take care of their kids, you know, they can't go to any of the class time. So. Those are Fairhaven people.
I guess I'm still struggling with understanding, we've covered it a couple of times, the actual number of people that this impacts for the community of Fairhaven. Like, I, I think that's what I'm trying to figure out.
The metric around that.
Yeah, what it's like, it's almost like the uh, unique. Unique customers of Fairhaven that are in these classes over the course of. A month, a week, like, what, how many people are we talking, well, specifically that five AM class?
Right, it's how many of those twenty five people are residents of our community that would not have the opportunity to work out? Because that five AM doesn't exist, right? If those, if those residents are a Little Silver or Middletown, like Ocean Board or. Elsewhere, that time necessarily benefit to our community, I think is what's, what, what we're getting at here, right? And so, and and look, I spent many years in the fitness industry. I know it well. I understand. Super early mornings, I understand how important that is for many people, um, especially in careers that don't allow for other times. But specifically as it relates to this. It is, you you know, is the benefit to the community within those twenty five people strong enough? To consider overturning an ordinance that's been in place for quite some time by Mayor Council? So I think that's what everyone is sort of looking for, right?
And there's this, there's a subset of people that are here right now that are actively being. Affected by the sound.
Right.
Yeah. And they are the surrounding, physical surrounding community. They're not this hypothetical group of people that are attending these classes. That's a hard line to connect, is to say those people don't deserve.
There are Fairhaven residents that go to the five AM.
About fifteen, of course there are. At least fifteen.
Yeah.
I can, you know, and they come, I'm gonna, I.
Yeah.
We're just denigrating.
But, yeah, let me, I just, I think, I, I think we've completed that. I just have one other witness. It is a Fairhaven resident. I, but I do wanna speak to that a little bit. I mean, I understand that. You know, you're a Fairhaven board, but I think it's been talked about, you know, the, the, the benefit to the community. I mean, if, if we only looked at businesses for the people that from our towns that showed up, I don't think that's the correct analysis. Um, I, I mean, if, if Barnacle Bills only got people from Rumson, they'd be out of business. I mean, I think you, you have to look at it a little bit more globally that, and and we're in a Two River. Community area. I live in Little Silver. I want people from other towns to come to Little Silver and transact business there. So I agree with this board member that, that as, as pertains to the detriments, yes, I mean, you have to look at the, the.
Was breaking noise ordinance, then that would be a problem. They're not, there's no noise ordinance that's being broken at those times. There's not people actively complaining. If there were, that would be a different story. But it's impacting people negatively in our community and and that.
But technically not at five AM.
But, but my point, I, I, the point I'm simply making is, and and I understand, you're, you're, you know, you're a Fairhaven board, you're, you're concerned about your residents. But, you know, no business is, I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's hard to kind of analyze it by just looking at. Okay, you know, that this only bet, how does it particularly benefit, you know, Fairhaven? I think that the, the benefit, and and I, I'm gonna call up some other, there's one last witness and then we'll be done and then you can hear from the public. Is that, you know, you want businesses to succeed and there's a community there. And the, you know, the, the, I think what you're hearing is that this, this type of business does benefit the community. It has health benefits, has mental health benefits, it has communal benefits. All those things are good. That's good for Fairhaven. You want good, healthy, productive people coming into the town, whether they're Fairhaven residents or not. So I, I hear.
That's a universal truth that, that's sort of, you you know. When the ordinances are constructed, all of those, you know, general factors are, you you know. Taken into consideration, right? Like, we want, obviously, we want businesses here, we want businesses to flourish here. There's no, no question about that, but there's a set of ordinances passed by the governing body. That, you you know, that are in place and to, you you know, you're then asking, you know, we're all volunteers and serve, you know, appointed. Capacity to, you know, overturn. To, you know, overturn something and there's, you know, there's law and and standards on how and why you do that. And we're, I think, looking for, you you know, that kind of evidence.
I I understand that, I mean, I may not be able to, we may not be able to get you what I'll call. You know, I may, and maybe there's some members in the public here from Fairhaven that.
I mean, people wanna speak honestly.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just open it up to the public at this point, it'd be right.
The one I'm hearing from the board, it's a sister. If what you said about the Poe facility is true, and I have no reason to doubt it's true. Then there would be an exception for every spa or every physical fitness center. And in a sense, the exception will swallow the whole. Call I'm saying, we're trying to find out something unique about this that benefits the community. And I I tend to agree with you, I I don't want to, I know, talk to you about that, that we're not simply just talking about. Fair Haven community, I think this is something that's gonna be honest, as as the board member says, because there is, and I expect we will hear. From members of the Fair Haven community, we're going to tell you, this is not necessarily benefiting the community and we're gonna have to weigh that.
Understood, understood.
Again, try to focus on that and say, no one is saying, and I don't think the proof at this point in time. That, you know, the type of activity, that type of class, anytime anyone's talked about a class, that that isn't a benefit. But otherwise, then, as I say, that exception will be in the, be in the ordinance, and if they were bound by that. You have, I think we have to understand that Mayor Council knew that we had facilities like that, but still didn't find the exception. You know, the two exceptions are where you meet that standard under the C two, it suggests, and or in a highly regulated industry. We can't stop, and I'm sorry to announce this to the people in large, the trash people who are coming waking you up at five o'clock in the morning, I can't stop them. I'm sorry, they're a highly regulated industry, there's a case law, so, but outside of that.
I I I understand, no, I completely understand, I just wanted to make the point, I don't know that we're gonna have. You know, I I and I completely understand what what, you know, what the board is getting at, um, but just, you know, and with, let me, I have one other witness that I wanted to call. She's not not a Fairhaven resident, but she does wanna speak, and then I think we can turn it over to the, open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Pete Weston?
Thank you.
Yes, W E S T O N. Okay, um, so I just wanna give my kind of take on all of this. So I have found Poe to totally change my life, um, I'm a mom of three kids, I commute to New York City five days a week. I run a trading desk globally and for an exchange, I have zero time to work out, my only option is ever five A M. So I can catch that ferry, are there other options in New Jersey, of course there are. But this class, I'm telling you, has literally transformed my body, I've lost over twenty seven pounds since my third child. Um, the instructors, like the motivation, the passion, I've never, I've just never seen anything like it and I'm telling you. I've worked out all over New York City, I mean, I've been everywhere and this is definitely one of the, probably the coolest, most special experiences I've ever had. Um, I need this class, like even emotionally, physically, like this, it really, like when when she texted me that it was canceled, I was a disaster. I was like, what the hell am I gonna do, like, I need this to get through my days, my days are really challenging. Um, I have a lot of responsibility and this, for me, mental health wise, it's just, it's, like I said, it's just changed my life. But when you talk about community and also, I'm also, you know, very into women owned businesses and, you know, Liz owns this, this is her baby. That is very special, to me, that should be something that the community recognizes and, you know, really, really promotes and I would think that they would. So just that alone, I think contributes to your community, philanthropy, all of the like the charity, the events that we do there that we've done at five A M. I mean, that's pretty awesome, that that's allowed and that we get the members that we get to show up for those and donate the money and, I mean, thousands of dollars have been. Raised for um, your friends, uh, charities, like I have ones that I, you know, I'm gonna be, I wanna bring a five A M. As well. So like, to me, that is showing like what an awesome community actually you guys have. And, you know, I've also met, I was just at a party like the other night with like over like fifteen Fairhaven women who I never knew. Before this class and these are girls that go at five A M. So you're getting at least anywhere from ten to fifteen girls. From Fairhaven in that class, like I can find the names, I'll get their addresses, but they are in that class and they're not going right now. And there are also some working moms who cannot get into the city either, they have husbands that are going to the city, so they have to be home with their kids. To me, this is something that is like so, so, so important and again, this goes back to what type of a community Fairhaven is. So like, to me, I I I don't, I I just see this as, you know, almost like, I mean, I won't say a no brainer, but. Everything that she's doing is promoting your community, it's creating a can make a culture, a an atmosphere for, you know. Women that are really struggling, you know, with so many different things and they really, really bring out the best and like all of us, I just, I don't know, I can't say it enough. I get like emotional over it because they really have changed my life, I I've never found a class that motivated me to get up, I went five days a week. I get home at eight thirty, nine o'clock at night every night and I'm there at five o'clock in their classes, so, you know, it's and it's not just me, God, there's so many people, I wish you could have had the entire. All five hundred members, cause they all would have come, um, so that's just kind of my take on this and where I do think it benefits your community.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, if anyone had any?
I I I. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any more, I'm not. Well, I'd like, I'd let these people be part of the, other folks be part of the public comment, yeah, yeah, I think let them just be part of the public.
Is there, uh, okay, I'm sorry, somebody?
I I don't have any more.
I think she might be a Fairhaven resident.
Is your presentation done, are you ready to open to public, or do you wanna call another witness?
I if this person would like to come up, are you a Fairhaven resident? All right, well, then you come up, we'll present, you will swear in, yeah, yeah.
Cause otherwise, we were gonna hear from Mr. Gardell.
I I understand.
And then we'll open the public there, then we'll.
Why don't we just call this this person as a witness? Yeah, no, you can come up as a witness.
He he gets to decide who his witnesses are, I just wanna be clear when we were on the record.
Excellent, hi.
So I'm sorry, the testimony you give.
I had started a letter to you when I first found out, so I'll proceed with that. If that's okay with you, does that work, I'll I'll just speak a bit?
No, at this point in time, no, you told me swear the testimony you give before the board, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name for the record, spelling your last name, please?
P R I C E Price, first name Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca Price.
Yes, I'm a little shaky when it comes to this kind of stuff, so I'm gonna do my best. Um.
Did we get her address, did you get your address?
I'm at ninety Hillcrest in Fairhaven. Um. My family and I moved to Fairhaven three years ago, renting at ninety Hillcrest. Uh, we recently purchased the house and are now full time Fairhaven residents. Uh, and homeowners and we did look in neighboring towns. And believe it or not, a large part of my, of our decision to stay in Fairhaven was literally proximity to Poe. So we'd be in an open house and I'd be Google mapping proximity to Poe, so we purchased the home. Because I could keep coming to Poe, um, I am a, oh, so I am a Fairhaven resident. Um, to advocate for the Poe five A M. Classes. These classes enable me and all Fairhaven residents to leave my home at four fifty five A M. And return at six oh five A M. Having taken care of myself and feeling ready to take on the day. Uh, for me, as a full time caretaker, so opposite, uh, you know, the opposite end of the spectrum of the. Power C E O, which is definitely in that room, my goodness, um, is a full time caretaker. And, you know, that means walking in the door just as my son wakes up. And doing the entire morning routine while my partner leaves for work. Uh, my child is able to have a present, regulated, healthy, community oriented parent. And I believe that this is the system, the family system, that really creates the very community. Uh, we all hate a living, we're blessed to live in a town. Where this family system is common, um, where parents are taking care of themselves and taking care of their children. And it's a place like Poe that that actually literally enables that. Um, I believe we must do everything we can to encourage this family system. So for full time professionals, you you've got that one though, pretty much covered on a previous testimony. But it means being able to take care of themselves before high stress workdays. I'm in a class with graduate students studying for their boards, doctors preparing for days in the E R, literally, and C E Os. Uh, in addition to other full time caretakers. Um, I am a certified Alexander Technique teacher. So I don't know if you know much about it, but it's like a very quiet, stillness based, um, practice. And, you know, no one recognized, I've actually been doing that for ten years, studying it very intensively. So no one really recognizes the importance of stillness more than I do. However, I've learned there is a time and a place for it. Uh, just as there is a time and a place for music, movement, motivation and community. Uh, my sister died by suicide this November and life became totally excruciating. Like excruciating, um, it was posed by damn classes. And the music and the movement and the teachers and the community that came with it. That literally got me out of bed every single morning. Um. I haven't missed a single morning until the town's prohibition of them. The music and the teachers work to take people out of their heads and into the present, they create moving meditations. A source of endorphins and a push to get stronger. I've been able to focus on building my strength at a time when that seemed literally impossible. Uh, my son is young, he had never had a babysitter, never. Uh, the five A M. Class times at a time when my husband is home and my son is sleeping. It has been the only way for me to get out of bed and feel ready to start a new day. Something impossible to feel after a trauma like family suicide. My story, while unique, is not so unique. Life serves everyone lens eventually, surreal tragedies and terrifying health diagnoses. When it does, it is having access to places like Poe that help people in this community. Push through and get stronger. Um, I I go on a bit, but I, uh. During the hardest year of my life, the one that should have been the darkest and the most isolating. I actually managed to be, I I also, I mean, it was just a year for me, but. Uh, during this hardest year, it should have been the darkest and most isolating. But I managed to become my strongest and most social self, which is so interesting, cause I'm like a full blown introvert. Everyone I meet there is from Fairhaven, like we've moved to Fairhaven and now I have friends in Fairhaven, like what? Uh, who knew I could make friends, like real community friends? It's, it's unbelievable, I go places and it's like, oh, from Poe, from Poe, from Poe. And you just, I know people everywhere and it's beautiful and I should have been. Quiet and scared and dark, but instead it's opened me up. Into this whole new person, uh, and it's really entirely in thanks to Poe's early morning classes. So, that's it, that's my story.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete, for having me.
Yes.
Rich.
Good luck, I think it's really good. After this relief, they're seeing my way of opening it. Five A M.
Like I said earlier, I reviewed the application sort of as a thorough official, but also the engineer role. My letter of August fourteenth, we talked about, or the testimony they discussed. As far as I can see, all the the items. And I, um. If you want, I can go really quickly, we talked about the waivers. Number two, um, as part of our ordinance, there's a technical design review committee.
Wait, that.
The app has requested administrative waiver, we waived that. I just spelled out that there were two zoning permit approvals issued by the Land Use Office, they had talked about that, one for the first floor, which was the plotties. And then obviously continuation of the the yoga studio for the second floor. I had asked for, um. Kind of a, an understanding of the relevant conditions and and kind of how the site functions today, which they had talked about. We talked about the parking agreements. We talked about the violations and the officer was here to testify. And. One of the last items was parking, the prior approval, nineteen spaces were required, fourteen. Are existing and they did provide testimony on how the parking functions both on site and the adjacent parcels. And then lastly, um, just a a minor comment, maybe take back to the property owner, the, uh. In walking the site, the gravel lot needs, um, some maintenance, which typically would be done in the fall. Prior to winter months and. So, as far as I can see, everything, uh, in my letter, we we just.
Your knowledge, your any thing with business that has customer loan, has sought planning board approval? For variance associated with an earlier restart time in six A M.
In the seventeen years of being your board engineer, I don't believe we've had any applications for this board. For this type of variance.
Yeah, I've not during this since twenty seventeen. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Um, so we have members of the public here that would like to be heard, so I wanna get to that. Um, Sheila, are there any, is there anyone, I would get to the.
Yeah.
People that are present first, but I also don't want to neglect anyone that joined online that wishes to speak.
People online, so at whatever time you're ready, we can ask them if they have something to say and they'll be able to indicate.
Okay.
They can answer behind it.
Okay, well, let's start with the people that are present, I I I feel like there's, uh, probably members of the public that wanna speak, so let's, uh, let's get started.
Step forward, I'm gonna swear you in. You saw me swear the testimony before the board, these truths, you're all truth about the year.
I do.
And then can I just say your name, address, fill in your last name, please?
I'm Stephanie Ruller, my last name is R U B E L L E R. And I'm actually a Fairhaven resident at, uh, Penny Sweden Normandy Avenue.
So tell me.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to testify, especially for the impact for the community as we see it as neighbors. We are directly in the line of fire that was drawn there.
Can you see your your residence or where? On the air?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And you see it quite far away, we still hear the noise and, uh. So we've been living in Fairhaven for over twenty years, have been wa- raising our two daughters here and. We definitely love the community and we have been very active in the community like everybody else. And, uh, we never had any problems with neighboring businesses, we frequent all the neighboring businesses. But since the last couple of years, we had all these issues with, uh, Poe and been with noise complaints and. Um, I think the main problem we have is that, is that it's very early in the morning and we do actually did have. A noise complaint at five o'clock and several times and it's also not always that, you know, if the noise is there that you actually don't stand up and. Call somebody to to do that, but it's it's regularly, it's and it's not only the music, it's the. But it's regularly, it's and it's not only the music, it's the amplific- voice amplification by the microphone. The instructors are yelling really loud and it's so loud that we can hear it in our bedroom with our windows closed. Um, also the instructor, we had testimony that the windows are closed, that is not the case. We have had several cases where we actually were so, we've woken up this morning and we like, oh yeah, got up, looked. And we walked around to see what was going on, the windows were wide open. Uh, we've reached out, my husband reached out to the owner and. Asked for, you know, asked them to to keep it down and there was no response on that. They did not get back to us and did not. But well, wouldn't even hear us and talk to us about that. Um, I've talked to other neighbors and that some are here, not all of them. But we have several neighbors that hears the sound as well. And um, we talk a lot about health and there were a lot of really. Um, stories that were heartbreaking, I I I agree and and we're all very much into health as well. So I work out regularly and I also had, I can understand the situation, I'm a working mom, I used to commute to New York myself. Um, was still able to actually get exercise in even when there was no five o'clock clock. So I'm I'm runner, I go to the Y, which in Red Bank actually opens at five AM, but it's also in an area where there's not. Residential area around, so and I also don't hear outside of the Y any any noise from the classes that they're holding. Um, so I can understand that a young woman that's professional has to have opportunities. But don't do those opportunities have to be in our neighborhood and in a way that distracts so many neighbors that live there. And that I think should have a right to have uninterrupted sleep until like five, six o'clock, seven o'clock, which I think is quite normal. And um, the also there was a lot of talk about children. We have also a lot of children living in our neighborhood. And um, you know, by some ladies working, women are working out at five AM. I don't think they want their children to be woken up at five AM by noise. And um, especially when you have young children, you want to have some sleep as long as possible, then get them ready, get them out to school. So you don't want your children to be woken up at five o'clock by some noise on the way to the base.
Anything else you'd like to present?
No, I think that was it.
Any questions? Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I always swear the testimony before the board and the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth. Station and spelling the last name against your.
Sure. My name is Manfred Krueger, K R U E G E R. So I I think one of the most important things that was overlooked here is how the town found out that they were operating at five AM. It was a noise complaint on May fifteenth at five forty in the morning. I spoke to Chief McGovern specifically regarding that complaint and he reviewed the body cam and issued a summons based on that evidence. So it it, yes, I think a month later, the cease and desist went out. That's why there are no more five AM complaints is because they stopped operating. We called on June sixteenth at five fifteen AM, July fourth, six twenty in the morning. And I believe that's one of the summonses that's out there, right, that you had. I live five hundred feet away, the town or.
Can you give us?
Yeah.
Point out where your residence is on the area?
Sure. Here.
Okay.
So that's ten times the distance the noise ordinance is supposed, is in effect. You're not supposed to hear any noise from any business before seven thirty AM within fifty feet. I am five hundred feet away. You know, I I went to court on July tenth when Poe was a municipal court. And the the prosecutor said that they would dismiss the tickets if there were no other violation. I heard this evening that there was a violation on the seventh of August. So I I it's just not working, right? They're not listening, they're not cooperating, they're not good neighbors. The website too, about the windows being open, if you go to the website, it says if necessary, clients are allowed to open a window. Okay, is it the windows are closed or are they open? So the the website is contradictory to what? Poe's website. I have a printout of it.
Okay, please. This gentleman did not interrupt you during your testimony. Would like the same courtesy extended to him. So I apologize.
Okay, I pose the only this business in the district that's ignoring the law and it shouldn't be rewarded with a five o'clock opening. We've had already issues, if this history of repeating incidents of of after a few calm days or weeks. I I it's it's just not sustainable, right? Um, and it's just not, it's not just the music, it's the shouting, right? It's the shouting, this amplification, that's it, it's like a, I guess it's like a boot camp. But the volume and the shouting and the tone is just insane. Um, Fairhaven is mostly residential. I don't think they have a right to disturb us at these hours. Um, issue is ongoing, unresolved and persistent. Uh, look, I I I'm all in favor, I'm I'm glad that they're successful. But I think that this needs to be tabled for amount of time to demonstrate that they're not going to disturb the peace. Of the of the of the neighborhood. Um, I I, you know, I think that's it.
Any questions?
Appreciate it.
Come forward.
I'm Claire Perry, P E R R Y. I live at fifteen to Normandy. I'm within two hundred feet of Poe. This is my house right here.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I also love working out in the morning. I go to AB Fitness at seven AM, which is their earliest class multiple times a week. I used to go to Clementine when it was in the neighborhood. And to my knowledge, none of them have ever had noise issues while operating successful athletic studios in town. Um, I understand the uh, the value of the uh, five AM class as it was described. Um, but I think the point about, you know, these other studios being able to operate in compliance with the law and the noise. Um, is worth considering. Um, I have not called the police, even though I have been woken up multiple times with all the windows in my home closed. Partially because I knew my neighbor was calling and I figured, why should I call again? Um, now I know, I should probably keep calling. Um, I did email the town code enforcer after I felt like it had kind of gotten out of hand multiple days in a row with being woken up at six AM multiple times. Um, just to voice my complaint and note that there was a persistent issue. Um, it does sound like there's some inconsistencies on what the rules around the windows are. I've walked by and seen the windows open as recently as a few days ago, um, during the day. Uh, so maybe there are different rules for the morning classes versus the daytime classes, but um. It does seem like the noise is persistent even with all of our windows closed. Um, and I just want to say, I also love having exercise studios in town that are women owned. I go to one all the time. And uh, I think that they do add value, but I think there's a way to do it that's uh, kind of the noise of the community. And uh, even those who are due to the coffee shop, which you guys all know, will only open at six AM. So I think that that's a barometer, I think, for uh, community business in town. That's all I had. Do you have any questions?
Is AB right? Is it seven AM? So I just, as I was sitting here, I checked their website says six AM. So is there a six AM class?
The AB Fitness in. One in Fairhaven, I think if you look at the Google Hours, it says six AM, but if you go and click in through the classes, the earliest one is seven to my. Did you look on the Google Hours? Okay, I think that might be the discrepancy. Sometimes when you click in, the hours are different, but check the website, don't trust me.
Just one question, when when you hear the noise, is it six AM or after? Is that when you're hearing the noise?
I'm, I mean, I try to be asleep at that time, so I normally hear it at six, I would say. Um, but definitely before the seven thirty quiet hours. So much so that I've looked at the town quiet hours, I think I didn't need to know before.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
My name's Talon Ferguson, F E R G U S O N. Uh, I'd just like to make a general comment. Uh, in our town, it's old.
Yeah, so I always swear a testimony before the board will be truthful, kind of putting up the truth.
Uh, in our town, it's a small town, it's an old town, and we have kind of a unique problem in that. Residential properties and commercial properties are often abutting. Uh, I live adjacent to the Acme Shopping Center. Um, there's no doubt that a commercial property has impact on residential properties. So in general, I would just ask that the planning board kind of in all matters, uh, consider that and make sure that residents are protected. Uh, when these types of commercial matters come forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone uh, anyone else that's present that wants to?
You saw me swear the testimony you give before the board will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name, spell your last name, and tell us where you live?
William Heller, H E L L E R, and I'm at five three three River Road. Uh, I think it's kind of a slippery slope here, because if you're gonna allow them to start at five, then uh. Duffy's Gym, that's you, you on it, uh, what, yes, what you should be over on that side, right? Maybe recuse yourself. Duffy's Gym. Should start at five. The the spin class should start at five. The Pilates should start at five and maybe Dunkin' Donut at five. Why not? It is, seems like the si- same logic, and if we're following with those people. So I I I don't see where you're going with this. We we should keep the ordinance the way it is. And if the council wants to change the ordinance and change the character of Mayberry. Then they should, but with this, the pass is uh, not very good, I think.
I think for the record, Dunkin' is open at five thirty. They actually, they checked that as well.
They open at five thirty? No, no, I think they should open at six.
You're right, that's about there.
If that's the case, then then maybe there should be uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, there there are. Other groups of people, those people who sleep late, go to bed late and sleep late. And are not the early bird people. And there's also people who have to work late, sometimes two, three o'clock in the morning. To usually tech people to keep your your internet and your porn going for you. And uh, they sleep late. So. There's, that's probably a larger community than the. Uh, women doing yoga. Okay, thank you.
Any questions, anyone?
Are are you going to recuse yourself? Because you you have a vested interest, I think.
I I don't believe that I have a.
You don't?
I don't know, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. Okay, so, um, there's a.
I'm sorry, there's no one else to?
No one's raising hands to make comment.
Okay. So, I think there's a couple of issues, right, that we need to talk about or we need to deliberate on and conclude upon, right? First is, is there?
Let's give Mr. Hood, if we're all done with testimony, done with public, would you like to make a closing statement?
No, I don't want to make closing statement. No, I'm good. I I think the board understands our position. Um, uh, you know, like we presented the evidence and the, uh, I, no, I don't, it's getting late. Let the board, let the board.
So I wanted to thank, you know, first and foremost, thank everybody for coming tonight and for um, expressing uh, their opinions and their experiences. With regards to uh, with regards to this matter. Um, and and certainly appreciate all the points of view. Uh, so again, like, like I said, I I think the standard is pretty clear. Is it, is it a benefit to the community at large? And is that, is that benefit enough to overturn, you you know, what what mayor and council passed as a, you know, as a ordinance in the town? And and supported by the different circumstances that that Doug laid out for us from the, from the MLU. Um, again, which governs how we're supposed to, you you know, the lens at which we're supposed to look at this. So I I I think, though, the other, the other issue, though, I I think aside from the five AM. Uh, is is the noise, right? So the noise is happening, um, you you know, even after five AM. Uh, and 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 so, you know, that's something I think that that needs to be addressed and it needs to be taken care of somehow. Um, I I think, you you, you know. Maybe having a a, you you know, more of those panels or other modifications made to the. You know, made to the building to to contain the sound in in some way, might might.
Just that that issue is not.
Yeah, I know that, I know that. So I I'm just saying, like, there's not, you you know, there's. If 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 something like that was to be done, then perhaps we can rehear an application or have another application put forth. But, you know, the standard here and the the application that's before us is is one of a C two variants. And and I think that's, you know, how, you know, we obviously have the the lens under which we have to make that decision.
You get to hear from other board members? Before, what would happen more with the others? I think the applicant will benefit from your comments. Uh, sometimes what happens is after the board comments, the applicant has just not to go forward. Takes a determined, see if they want to revisit the issue. Sometimes they don't, sometimes just. Saying this primarily for our newest member, it's not busy or poor, not that he applicants apply to do that. Um, but in this instance, the straightforward application is the number to the site plan to allow it to have an exception. We have our ordinance at this point in time, and they've specifically referenced uh, five AM to continue classes that they'd had before. But stay, we can discuss the standard accordingly, but I think it helps an advocate hear some of your thoughts in regards to this matter. Um, Chair, any other board members to share their thoughts or the benefits we have?
Quick, a question. So we're talking about um, variance, the site plan that that states six AM start time is the earliest. The other businesses in Fairhaven that operate early. Um, regardless of their focus, whether it's fitness or Dunkin' or what have you. Do they, are they operating on an individual site plan for each uh, address? The the way that the that site plan process works, are they all under one blanket kind of site plan? I don't think so. It's it's an individual application, right?
Usually it's an individual application if they've come before the board, recite and leave. Everybody comes before the board, recite that rule or something, something, some places don't require, single-family rights, it says required. If you are commercial, depending on the size, unfortunately, they come before you. There may not be an articulation in the specific resolution as to a start or beginning time. There may have been testimony in their record concerning what they're proposing to do when they'll have people on campus. Primarily that's a function going back towards what type of parking they have. But there usually is also, what I refer to as catch-all language. Which is, and you'll see it in resolutions that we have, that the applicant will buy that any wall. Clickable, your ordinance, service, safety, innovation, those kinds of things, so that I don't. So that the the resolution is inverted with every, you know. You open on these holidays because of all those kinds of things. So it's generally a catch-all. As I reviewed the resolution, I absolutely agree with counsel that there's not a specific start time or end time. I also agree with counsel, this is not highly regulated industry, but I do believe that have catch-all language. That puts it into the zoning regulation that we discussed before. That unless there is an exception requested by the applicant, they are expected to have the start and end on the system of the ordinance. I can't speak to Dunkin' Donuts. I don't have that resolution for me. I don't know what happened. I know that was fairly.
Remember that resolution, right, like the the the, I'm sorry, the ordinance. But remember that resolution, right? Like the, 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 I'm sorry, the ordinance. Talks about open to the public, right? So it, it's not to prevent a manager or somebody like. You know, the person that teaches the early classroom, going into the business and doing. Something inside the business to get ready for the day. That's not open to the public. That's not. Yeah, people will be going into the bracket and start. Right, when the public can walk in, it's six AM. When a spirit of dying or. Not gonna go back to go. But, but you know what I mean, is, is. Of their businesses in town operate. Earl, and I'm playing. At six AM. Yeah, right? Yeah, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that issue is before you with this. An- anymore than, you know, there are a number of things that I think everyone on the board members should say. By the way, I think there's a violation here. We don't have that authority. That becomes a current enforcement issue. But in terms of comments that would be helpful for this applicant as to how, what your thoughts are as to whether or not. You think the, the method criteria, have the method criteria. Any comment? And you don't have to have any. So I just usually like to make these comments, you know?
We, we use the community at large. That's, that's how we phrase this, that is the standard.
Well, the, the standard, standard, the way, which, and I'll read it into the record. The focus of the C two variance will not be on the characteristics of the land. But rather on characteristics of the land to present an opportunity for improved planning that will benefit the community. Um, in, in the articulation of that, given one of our, one of our courts. Set the focus of the case then will not turn. On the characteristics of the land, the current zoning requirements, which create a hardship on an owner, warranty and relaxation of the standards, and they're comparing the C one. It's a hardship, relaxing, but from the characteristics of the land that present an opportunity for improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community. Um, so there's something different about this application that. They requesting additional hour to start, there's something different that benefits the community. I don't think. And I, and this is where we got up to community before. I don't think it's specifically tied to Fair Haven. I don't think it's that global. I think it's, you know, if, if you found that this business for some reason provided. A benefit that was, because of the nature of this business, that was unique to this business again, so it doesn't. My comment before, so it doesn't swallow the whole. You know, what is different about this, that that extra hour? Benefits this community. Instead, you, you have certain places. Where. You know. There's something unique in the, in that it really isn't applicable necessarily to this, but when they were reviewing this case. It's the coffin versus planning war for Warren Township. And, and there was an issue as to whether or not, in examining the C two. Of course, they had the legislator, eh, legislation added C variants, a very narrow band of cases in which the standard will fall somewhere between the traditional standards of hardship. On the one hand, and special reasons on the other. So in a sense, you're looking, what is, what is in our. Zoning ordinance is to say, we recognize something here. We want to promote something here. We want to promote something different here, and this does that. We haven't heard that. It's not our burden to come up with these rules. The applicant has to come forward with those rules. Either point to something in our legislation, either point to something in our master plan, it's, you know. These are the special reasons, these are the things that we promote that's different, that make it different. Without that application. I don't know where you go to answer your question. Community two issues, I don't think it's that provocative to say only Fair Haven. You could find that there's a community large, you know, that benefits from this. And that, and that has been a substantially way out, outweighed detriment, because the detriment we talked about. How it impacts residential neighbors, how it potentially impacts residential neighbors, and potentially how you then enforce that standard down the line. It is true that no other case creates precedent for us. But you can see the natural tendency for folks to say, well, what about this? What about that? What about that? And each case falls from up and down.
And does the variance, thank you, does the variance stay with the property even if Poe chooses to move locations? Or does it stay with?
In this instance, because of the nature of this, it would stay with this business. It wouldn't. C two in this instance, I don't see it attaching to them later in the sentence. Most of the time, with bulk variants, C ones, C twos would. And, and I, and I don't think counsel disagrees with you, but if he does, you can certainly establish.
No, I, I agree with attached to this particular um. Business in use. I mean, for example, if some other. You know, I think the analysis, if the analysis. Yeah, the, the analysis would be different if it's a. You know, a different type of business. So I, I would agree with your, you know, the board attorney on that.
Any other comments that the board members?
So we talked about the benefits outweighing the detriments. The detriment is the noise. If the noise abatement works and the detriment is eliminated, does that? Does that shape people's opinions on this? Meaning if. You know, I, I want to support small business, I want to support, you know, female home, I want to support mental health, I want to support the community at large that it's created. But it sounds like the detriment is real to the residential neighbors in the area. So I, I, I'm struggling with this one, but what would help me? Is if we knew that the noise abatement worked. Um, like.
Understood.
To the, to the satisfaction of the residential.
Understood.
That's, 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 that's. The balance of it, that I'm, I'm struggling with is, I think it's, it's like, as it stands currently, it doesn't seem to outweigh the detriment. Um, but, but in a perfect world where the noise abatement works, I think it does substantially benefit the community.
We're talking about, yeah, we're also talking about.
Unless they choose to go back later.
Yeah, we're, we're also talking about, there's an ordinance that's been passed and. You, you know. Those ordinances go through by a. You, you know, the process to get passed, and there's debates that happen that are just like this. You know, the, the, you, you know, so you're asking, again. You, you know. Us to, you know, overturn something that's been. You know, like.
Yeah, it, it's just hard to do.
Yeah, but I, but it's like the noise.
Standard that's, with the standard that's set, right? The noise standard starts at seven thirty. It's like, it's, I think it's different. The, the business open times are different. They value it differently than the noise.
Right.
Because the noise rules are seven thirty AM, and if the noise abatement is successful, if you don't have noise. I don't see the difference between Poe operating at five AM and Dunkin operating.
What about the triple? The ordinance on all other businesses. The Busker do open at five AM, or a hardware store at five AM, so contractor could load up his truck before he gets on a road to get his job. I mean. Then you have disruption in all different areas.
I think I was struggling similarly to you, and that's sort of what I came to, like the, the. The abatement of the noise. On one end, helps solve it for me. But then I think when you play that forward, the detriment. Is again, what he said, what that trying to be saying, as it relates to other businesses, right? And, and how do you then start to define, you define it. Very specifically and individually against those weights. And that was my second thing, so triple that, that. You know. But I struggle similarly to you did.
Right, it's about panels earlier, I wouldn't see efficacy of those panels, and speculative at this, at this point now. So.
Any other, any other board members comments?
Circle effect, I think, yeah, it's a fair point, but would there be so many? I mean, would a hardware store open at five to accommodate five, you know, contractors wanting to have that early?
Here, here's generally what I have. If comment from the board is done, here's a generally half. Talking about this one time, otherwise all frame of resolution.
Yeah, let me, do you mind if I talk to my client first?
Five minutes?
We take a.
It was five minutes?
Yeah.
Real five minutes.
Cause uh, Doc said you need to just do a little call since. Okay, so we're gonna start, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna resume the meeting.
Um, Mrs. Bush. Here. Mister Neil.
Here.
Mister Paolo.
Here.
Mister Ross.
Here.
Mister Anderson.
Here.
Benzman, here.
Here. Okay, so um, so we're gonna, I, I guess first, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I've had a chance to discuss with my client. I've heard, uh, first of all, I want to thank the board for their time and attention. Um, I know this is somewhat of a. Uh, little bit of a complex, difficult i- issue. I heard somebody said, never heard an application like this before, so, so I understand that. And I think. Of having heard the board's comments and um, uh, the one board member, you know, kind of struggling with the balancing of the detriments, I, you know. I, w- w- we acknowledge that as we sit here now, there's still. Noise complaints out there, noise issues. So um, I think what, what we'd like to propose, if the board would be so inclined to allow us, would be to withdraw the application. Without prejudice, um, and see if we can. Address the noise issues. And I, I, with the understanding, I know there's other board members that. Um, you know, have concerns with the other side of the coin. And then if we want to come back, we come back kind of with a clean slate, at least on the. Um, uh, noise issue. So if that's, and, and we appreciate the board really. Obviously, when I do this a lot, and you, you like to get a vote, but we think in this particular case, it would be in everybody's best interest. For the board not to act on this tonight if the board be so inclined.
Okay, so this would be a complete withdrawal. There would be no time to, to vote the.
No. Complete withdrawal, with, withdrawn without prejudice, but with complete withdrawal, yes, yes, yes.
Oh, no action to take, so nothing would happen by way of.
Yes.
Everyone understand what's happening? Want to have it explained? Anyone want to make that motion to allow the?
Well, so, so the, the five AM classes obviously cannot belong, they're in violation.
It'd be, it'll be a violation of the.
No, I will, yeah, that, obviously, that's a, an code enforcement issue, and, and my client has been honoring that, as I think you heard tonight, so there's no intention to. To leave here and stop operating the five AM class, so yes.
Okay, a good representation of that, clear. Yes, for motion to allow the application to withdraw? I'll make a motion. Second. That's for a long pause.
Mrs. Bush, yes. Mister Manala.
Yes.
Mister Manala.
Yes.
Mister Ross.
Yes.
Mister Anderson.
Yes.
Mister Benham, yes.
Yes.
There's a proof to withdraw.
Yeah.
Without prejudice.
Yeah. Again, thank you, everybody, for, the board for your time and attention on this matter. We appreciate it. And enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
That was fun.
How were you?
Good.
Yeah, alright.
I saw you taking notes.
C two criteria.
So um. We need to talk about, uh, we've asked Michael to be here, obviously, to resume and help us resume our, our discussion of our, our master plan requirements for next year. Um, August of next year, probably a year. Like a year, this meeting next year, we're gonna have to obviously approve. The uh, the master plan. So um. As you all know, we've had, I, I guess, a number of discussions, a number of starts and stops around what we need to do, what we're supposed to do, how we're supposed to do it. Uh, and so, we are, um, you know, we've, we've enlisted um, the planning firm. We've gotten uh. A um, a statement of work approved uh, by the council, so we have budget. Um, to operate. And so, um, what Michael is gonna speak about is, I, I guess, a proposed or. You know, draft timeline of, of what, you know, what has to start to happen in sequence. And where we have to, um, you, you know, the, the different um. Things that we have to do within that, within that sequence, correct, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, um, we've drafted a schedule, and it's subject to change based on how we work with the, uh, with the committee. Um, but I want to talk with you about the, the first steps that are really important. I really want to, I really wanted to focus on the first step, so.
Sure.
To your point, um. Master plan reexamination expires, uh, you have your ten years uh, next August, so we're on track to. Um, update the master plan, uh, the elements that you've uh, chosen. And to also adopt a master plan reexamination report within that framework. Um, a lot of the work process is over, so it's a good time to do that, um, updating your policies. So we've got a, a, a schedule laid out where we think we can make that happen. Uh, we've built in a little buffer, so we're targeting the end of July to the beginning of August, so we have a little bit of, of room in that. Um. But the first steps in this, really, um, there's, there's a period of public engagement, there's a. There's um, committees that we've uh, recommended to be formed. Um, and so the first steps are to constitute these committees. Okay, the first committee is the master plan advisory committee. That generally is a subcommittee of the. Planning board, and it could also include uh, members, a, a member of the governing body. Um, or any other people that you feel have the uh, bandwidth and the interest uh, to um, take that on. Um, we don't like to see those too large. Um, so I would say anywhere from between three and seven peoples probably the most I would do on that, but it's purely up to you. Um, every town does it differently. The other um, committees are the technical advisory subcommittees of the master plan committee, and those are focused.
Question only on the three to seven. Realize if you have more than a quorum, you're gonna be advertising. And publishing, because you're having tech, technical meeting, but if you don't have a quorum, or you have other members, somewhere in that three to seven, less than one. Would not have, you can do.
Right, it's, it's less than a quorum, it's gonna be.
So four, four hard guys.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be one or, yeah.
Right, it's not us.
One or two people, two people from probably from the planning board, maybe three.
Yeah, four max.
Yeah, four max. More max, right, exactly. And then there might be other people, right? Other might be, like, other. Okay, and then there's gonna be subcommittees based on the different elements of the plan, correct?
That's exactly correct. We call those the technical advisory subcommittees, call them lots of things, but I think that's the, what we really are, and that's. Housing, land use, circulation, utilities, and recreation conservation. Uh, I would suggest that, I think housing and land use are tied together so closely that you may want to combine those. Um, you've got your housing plan element done for the fourth round. Uh, other than that, I don't know what, what, you, you may be focusing on other issues, like this missing middle housing.
We have, we have, as a, as a board, have to discuss. If there's anything else that needs to be done for housing, that's right, because we just did the, the update, right? We just.
You did your housing plan on one, you haven't done your land use plan on.
Right, okay, right. But we, we've done, right, the housing element is already redrafted for the um, affordable housing issues.
It was adopted.
And adopted, right, so. Um, you, you know, there's that part of the plan, you, you know, I don't foresee anything, we would have to consult with others to determine if there's anything else that needs to be done for housing.
But, but beyond the, beyond the, the housing plan element is really this, you know, mandated uh. Master plan element and fair share plan by the Fair Housing Act. There are. Things beyond just meeting your affordable housing obligation or your vacant lot adjustment that come into play. For instance, in other towns. We focus on different typologies of housing and how to work them into the framework of your land use uh, governance. Um. So there's, there's other things that can happen there. But that's, but I think that they could be combined together because they're very interrelated. If you're talking about it, housing, you're talking about land use very often.
But, but essentially, if the board were not to focus on anything else regarding the housing element. Based upon what you've done, that would satisfy our master plan exam and update. If they had, if they decide nothing else.
Oh, of, of course, of course.
And I'm not suggesting that, I, but I was, I just want to.
Yeah.
If you went through the housing element very detailed.
Yeah, my, my only point was that, um, in some of our towns, they focus on intensity of, of development, they focus on scale, they focus on. How, how things are configured, the types of units, whether or not to permit. Um, and a lot of the towns with, you know, high value, single family. Um, uh, and a lot of the towns with, you know, high value, single family predominated, um, air, um, districts, they will look at how do they get more housing units into those areas without disrupting. Uh, there, it, it's beyond just the numbers of a housing plan. So, uh, whatever you guys want to work on, we're here to work with. So that's the point. Um, so the technical advisory subcommittees, and then we, we also encourage, and, um, I didn't say this in our scope of work or proposal, but we also like to meet with folks like, um, your engineer, recreation, uh, uh, directors, open space coordinators, folks, folks like that, because they often have a lot of information. Uh, you know, Rich would have information on utilities, roads, infrastructure, things like that, stormwater management, um, those kind of things, because they all play into land use, uh, circulation utilities clearly. Um, but the first step is to, to constitute all those committees, because those are what we meet with. We don't have, the only meeting we have scheduled for the planning board in our scope is when the adoption happens. All of this is then outside of the planning board.
What was all that all along, so quick, or did other committees ever get them? Housing and land use was a basis.
Circulation, utilities, and recreation conservation.
And we had discussed, but had not yet adopted at the, uh, officially adopted, right? So we had housing, which we thought was satisfied by what we've already done to be determined, but probably satisfied. Land use was going to be led by Andrew. Utilities was going to be led by Dave. Um, circulation is going to be led by Anna. And, um, conservation, recreation, and open space was Sean, but Sean's resigned. So we still don't have somebody to lead, uh, recreation and open space. So, I mean, we're gonna have to formally adopt those leaders. Um, and then I, I dubbed as mayor and council have to approve.
No.
So we don't, so somebody had said, or I don't know if it's true or not, that's why I'm asking you, is, so we can appoint those members ourselves, right? Like, and the members outside. So, so.
I mean, there's obviously going to have to be a communication with mayor and council.
Of course.
If we're going to go on one to the engineer, for more, still for municipal work, we have to coordinate with that. Those, those are.
No, but members of these committees that are not planning board members, do they have to be approved by mayor and council?
I don't believe so. Let me, let me confirm.
It's that firm, yes, because I, I heard, or I think Josh had said he needed.
Or, or I think it was at a meeting with.
My new listener.
It was, it was a meeting that I don't think you were present at in Vicentine and Paul, actually, for some reason I I remember.
Right, I.
I don't remember if it's Chris York or the attorney who originally we thought they didn't need to be in that, I think.
Let me.
Yeah, well, the attorney of Chris said that they did need to be approved by that. I.
Sometimes it depends on who's on the board.
Okay. So we need to figure that out and get the answer to that. Um, I, and, and then, but at the next meeting, I would think that we could appoint, or even at this meeting, we could appoint the leaders each of the subcommittees. And at least approve that, that way they can go and, and we can figure out who else needs to be on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Michael.
No, the, the, and that's, and that's important. That's, uh, because we are going to take all of our direction from the, uh, the master plan committee. The master plan committee ultimately is going to be the decider who says planning board adopt this plan. This is the plan we're bringing to you, right? That's how it goes. It, it comes up from everything else. Um, step one, that, that's step one for you. Step one for us already started. Rich has been providing us all the documents and data to confirm that we have all of the municipal planning documents. Uh, Allison has provided all the ordinances, I believe, since, that have been adopted since the last reexam. We have reviewed those. I think we're about, I want to say we're about eighty percent done with that. Um, and that will be put together into a briefing for you guys, so that you will have that. Uh, essentially a summary of the big points of these documents, what you have, so you can see the spectrum of planning, uh, documents that you've had. Um, you can see how old they are in many cases, um, but also the, the last reexam is in there from twenty sixteen. Um, we've also got, uh, the data, we've be, begun mapping. Um, we've already built the format for this document, so that we're starting to put it all together. Um, so we haven't been waiting for this. We've wanted to push ahead as fast as we could, because we know you have a, a a time threshold of this, of this year, and I'm not concerned about making it. Um, once we get to that document, uh, we're gonna have a kickoff meeting with the, the master plan advisory committee. Um, at that, at that time, you will have reviewed our briefing document.
Okay.
And you will begin to identify the issues that you want to deal with.
Okay, when do you, when do you anticipate having a briefing document for us?
Uh, September first. It'll probably be before that, but September first. Um.
Okay, so at a minimum, at the next meeting, we need to make sure we have, um, you know, for each committee, who those committee members are going to be. And at least propose them to the planning board to be approved by the planning board, so that if they are required to go to mayor and council, we can get them approved to mayor and council. So we have something.
Yeah, I'll have that answer for you before we get to next meeting.
Okay. Because once we hear that briefing, that's going to inform the survey, or we have to come up with a survey before that?
No, no, the, that's going to inform your knowledge of what you think the issues have been.
Okay.
And you're going to mix that together with the issues you think you need to deal with and the questions that.
And that will inform the survey.
That, that will inform the survey, uh, and the questions. And the survey can't be, you know, I've done surveys with a hundred questions and it takes you twenty minutes and it's too much. The survey is really a, a very high level survey. Uh, and you're using it to get people's sentiment and vision for things that you think are important. For instance, um, if, if we had to have more homes, where would you like to see them built, right? Downtown? Somewhere else, you know, something like that. Um, to, to gauge that, there'll also be demographic questions you would ask in there too, so that you have, have that. Um, uh, and based on that, you are going to develop the questions that you want, based on the information we give you, your review of that, the discussion we have, and focusing on the big issues, because it's not going to be a monster survey. It's going to be something that's, takes about ten to fifteen minutes to fill out, not including the demographics stuff. So that's how you do that. Um, and then once you have those issues, you develop those questions. And we will help you with the questions, right? You, when you start talking to us about the things you want to know, we can help you with how to ask those questions, okay? But we did not include in our scope building the survey, running the survey, publicizing the survey, analyzing the survey. Once the results are in, we'll review it together and we'll you know, we'll go over it and you will say, here's what this means. And it should be able to bring your focus in on, on the issues which you really want to focus on. Um, and at that point, um, the survey, the way, the way we've done them before, they take between eight and nine weeks to do, soup to nuts. So that's that's, that's something that needs to be thought of ASAP. Once you constitute your committees, once we've had our kickoff and we've analyzed it and you have the briefing, um, because it'll take, it, it may take you a week to, to, to agree on the questions, you know, there's some, there's going to have to be an agreement, yes, these are the questions we want to ask. Um, then there's test, you want to test it, it's got to be tested, you know, and make sure it works on different devices, whether it's iPhone, Android, PC, Mac, all that kind of stuff, that's testing. And then, um, running the survey. And then you got to publicize it, you have to let people know what's happening. How are you, what are the outlets you're going to use for that? Are you going to use, um, the website? Usually, most folks use the websites, um, but are you going to post QR codes somewhere for that? Um, and that's all got to be done. So that, that front end of the survey is critically important. Um, and then reinforcing it. Once the, the survey, when you launch a survey, generally it's a two to three weeks. I think three weeks is probably a good amount of time for that. But you want to keep pushing people to it. You want to remind them that it's out there. Survey's out, have you seen it? You know, your friends are doing it, you know, let, let, let us know what's go, you know, let us know what you think. What do you want, right? That kind of thing. Um, uh, and so, and then once it's done, now it's, I think if you use something like Survey Monkey, do you get the, the, what do they call the files, the Excel files, I forget what they call those. CS, CS, CSV files, right? Um, then you'll be able to, to see, see what the results are and, um, be able to incorporate them. And we would have those in appendix, uh, in the, in the plan.
Okay.
If you need to, if you want.
So in, you know, based on the, the timeline that you're looking at or the draft, that, that, the, like, when does this, you know, you said the survey, soup to nuts, eight to nine weeks. Ideally, when is that nine weeks conclude? Like, when, in order to meet your deadlines?
Oh, well, I, I think that frankly, we're coming up on the perfect time for survey, because everybody's back from similar vacations. People are coming, you know, they're back in, you know, they're back home for school and all that other stuff. So you're hitting it at the right time. Uh, the early fall, um, you know, in our draft schedule, we're seeing it, you know, finish the end of October.
Where, where are things like updating the zoning map? Got some change from there, regarding the housing element. Things like the land use map. Where is that in the time table to physically u- update those?
Well, the, well, the, we, we will be able, we've already started on some elements, but, um, it's ongoing through this, right? So we're going to be doing whatever words we can, but until we get through the survey and there's, and you've digested that, that's going to give the, the master plan committee direction and the technical advisory subcommittee's direction.
No, I, I'm talking about just to update where we are now. I don't, master plan, well, we now, when we did the housing, you know, we created new zones.
Mm-hmm.
Zoning map was updated at that. I don't know that.
For the overlay zones.
Yeah.
Well, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be updated yet, because your plan, uh, only has draft ordinances, huh? So, because the.
Let, let's take something you, in the, you know, something. Land use, land use. What are the current uses, despite what the zones are, what are the current uses in the borough, despite with the zoning, because you'll have residential uses, the commercial zone, those kinds of things, to update those maps. Is that something that's being done now, ongoing? No?
No. It's not being done.
How does that get done? I, I, I guess.
You're talking about, you're talking about identifying individual, like, an existing land use map?
Yes.
Oh, existing land use, yeah, that's that's being done, um.
So we've got, no?
No, 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 I didn't know what you're, I was, I was not sure what you're saying. Existing land use, we're using Mod Fortax that, and that's what's going to be based on.
Okay.
That's just part of the, the base of the, uh, of the land use plan. But the bulk of the, bulk of the elements will be built in the, in the initial draft in the, between the fall and February of, of twenty six. You know, that's when we'll be really drafting the plan.
One thing I was going to bring up, the, um, and maybe this is where it caused a little confusion in the governing body level, the mayor and council has a land use subcommittee that they formed.
Oh, terrific.
There's various, maybe even um, Councilman Olson chairs that subcommittee, he's not here this evening. It was something that, um, it's, it's, we've had it in the past. It, it's things that come from the zoning board annual report.
Mm-hmm.
Things that that chair or members that board or their professionals want us to look at, I think. Doug, you've been part of some of those conversations where I think their engineer may have drafted some, uh, items of discussion. We actually have a meeting coming up next weekend.
Mm-hmm.
They've had, they've had a couple of meetings this summer, but low attendance for obvious reasons, so uh, we kind of brought this back to life. I think that would be an asset to you guys, um, but I think there's a way where we need to maybe marry some of this together, so there's not duplication of efforts or.
Anything missed.
Anything missed.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really three items that I always look at. It's, it's housekeeping, it's administrative cleanup in the ordinance. It's items that my office or land use deals with on a regular basis, where there's just confusion with the wording or how a definition reads, or what was the intent of this ordinance? And how is it enforced? And then the third is we need to add, you know, we need to deal with vaulted ceilings, because there's no definition and.
Are you still dealing with that?
Yes. And, um, although you only get a couple.
If, if, when it's vaulted and the new owner comes in, you can create another floor.
That's how I read it.
Exactly.
Well, I think.
But those are the.
That's what, that's what, you know, if you.
I think if you put a foot, if it was above fifteen feet, it gets counted double.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a definition on that, but it's the, um, the questions that always come up is, well, how are you interpreting that? And I think it's been consistently interpreted, wha- whatever it is. So that's some of the items that the subcommittee wants to discuss.
What are cleaning up?
It's cleanup, it's, it's reassurance that we're handling things at the same level of intent as the boards are handling and things of that nature. So um, I'm not sure if you were even aware of that subcommittee.
Nope.
So, uh, we should prob, there is a resolution out there that names who's on that subcommittee, so I could certainly maybe Sheila, if you can follow up. Yeah, and then we could talk internally with, with Chris and there's going to be other discussions on whoever's named to these various committees, whether.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to have a call with Chris tomorrow to make sure that we're on the same page as to what I think planning board controls, although as I say, using resources in the borough certainly not going to just go along one of those. I think how we do that, Chris. Which is where I'm coming from. Um, but we're playing nice terms.
Yeah, and just to let you know, yeah, there's, there's work and homework being done out there. So there's, there's a lot of
Terrific.
good information.
Well, that's it. I mean, that, and, and this process really should end up, so what you're talking about is things that are going to come into play in the reexamination report, because that includes recommendations for zoning changes.
Yes. Yeah.
And it's, it's important to include whatever you can in there. Because, um, there's noticing issues for things that aren't mentioned in there because of the way the law works.
Right.
It's weird, but also, um, it also is going to inform the land use plan some level too. So, yeah, having, having those two entities work together um, would be very important, and it would be informative to this process.
So ideally by the end of October, we have the survey completed.
Yes.
Really what you're saying.
The survey is survey result, you have the results in here.
Results.
The results, yeah.
So, by the end of October, right?
Yes.
And then what comes after that?
After that, there's a, 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 a master plan committee meeting to review. Um, and the, uh, technical advisory, uh, subcommittee meeting review.
And that's to review the results.
Review the results and, and take it in. So, uh, you know, ideally, because these things kind of come up from the.
And when would those, when would those meetings have to complete for you or?
Uh, we just, we have a week, you know, this is early November. It's right, it's right after. And then, um,
That one happens.
Well, that.
They're all done.
It's all happening, it's all happening.
Oh, it is.
Um, and, and this is, uh, obviously, we'll, we'll monkey with this as necessary to make sure we hit the, the overall deadline. Um, but we do have, we'd also have in our scope an open house, and the question really would be, is the open house something you want to use as a way to get more general information after the survey, based on what the survey's telling us? Meaning that if we have an open house, generally, we focus on three to four topics, and we use those as a way to drill into more deeply what the public may think about these things. Um, alternatively, that open house could be at the conclusion of the preliminary draft, the first draft, where you can then, instead of saying, what do you think, you can say, here's where we're headed, here are the big ideas. What do you think now? What do you think about this? Right? So there's two different ways to do that. And whichever one you think would be more valuable to you, we can do it at either time. It would just be it.
If we wanted to do it with a draft document, which I think would be more effective, because I think just the survey, people are going to come and just comment on the survey or.
Well, it wouldn't be on the survey, it would be, so imagine the survey says, you know, um, we we'd like to see more housing downtown, let's say, for instance. Okay. Well, then you might have an open house where you actually have. Well, then you might have an open house where you actually have um precedent images of different types and densities of housing. So that the folks can rank those. So saying you want more housing in place, but what kind of housing, right? That's, that's where that would, and then that would inform the land use plan, right? Um, that's how that evolves to become more specific at the open house level. You're focusing on more specific topics and it's still. Not just, here's what the surveys say, it's actually getting more detail and getting more interaction and allows an opportunity for. You know, we would have two representatives there, the the master plan committee would have representatives there. And we would actually man stations, you know, whether it had to do with uh circulation or open space or land use. And we'd have those topics there and we'd be trying to get more information with more specificity on how we're. Uh, zeroing in on possible um. Actions that we're going to talk about in the master plan or the re- the reexam. So.
Otherwise, we're forming our draft based on our own opinions of the survey. Right? Without, without having that open house.
Yeah. But I'll tell you, I'll tell you this, whether it's a survey or the open house, nobody's giving you the answer.
Yeah.
Right? You're coming up with the answer, right? And you, you know, nobody's going to come up. Right, and it really, and and we don't have to decide until we get the survey results. We can look at the survey results. Right, and you can say that, right? So, so we don't have to make that decision right now. But but they're, they can be helpful, particularly if you have topics you really want to focus on. And you can be um and you can engage people that way.
Okay, so. We get to. Early to mid-November, we review. We have meetings to review the survey results. And then the open house would happen at what point? At like, in order to meet the deadline, when would that open house have to be?
If we were going to do it at the front end.
We're gonna do it at the front.
If we do it the front end, uh, that open house is happening uh beginning of December. You don't want to go past beginning of December or year into next year. You're not going to get people at an open house on third week in December. You might not get them at the second week in December. Uh, you know, we get, we get a little scrunch, scrunch there at the end with Thanksgiving weekend um. And uh, and then you get into the holidays over uh in December. And that, and that really, that takes some planning, right? We have to plan that out. Uh, we would, you would need to give us clear direction on what the big, the, the. The answers are that you want, we have to build um, you know, the mechanism for how we want to get input. A lot of times we use, you know. Images, we use kind of participation dots and things like that, so you really see what people have preference for. Um, if it's a circulation uh question uh where people want to identify like. Where they have trouble crossing for pedestrians and bikes, you know, if it's near the school and I'm having trouble, my kids can't cross there. You know, when you find that everybody's putting a mark right on that spot, that's the kind of thing that you would do. Or I wish there was a a bike lane here and you get folks to to show that on a map or something like that, things like that.
And so what happens, so so we have the open house, let's say at the beginning of December, and then what happens? Like, what happens after that?
Well, after that, um, we look at the results of the open house, we share them and. You're gonna get, you get us to.
Form the draft, like I'm just trying to get a understanding of like.
That's exactly right.
Due to, like, how much time do we have? Like, I, I mean, we only have twelve months.
You got tons of time.
It doesn't seem like we have tons of time.
Draft plan will be January, we have eight months.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna be fine. I mean, this is, this is, you know, we're gonna be built, we're already building your plan. I'll say that right now, I I said that first. Um, you know, it's gonna take uh, you know, three, three and a half months to to get a a preliminary draft. And you're gonna take three weeks to review that. We're gonna meet, you're gonna tell us, you know, both the technical advisory subcommittee and the. Committees and and you will say, here's what we want, you know, here's the changes we want, we make those changes. Take another look at it. Tweak it and then it's on to the public hearing and then after the public hearing, if there's any changes after that, because the public's going to weigh in on what they see.
So how long does the draft have to be out there before we can have a public hearing?
Ten days.
Okay, so it's a short, okay.
I broke this up early on as part of the open house with the public engagement. I think it's important, we look at all the accomplishments as well. Whether it's a brief overview of all the stuff we've gotten done in ten years, whether it's the new facilities, whether it's. The streetscape, whether it's the, you know, additional pedestrian crossing.
You get an opportunity to do that and you talk about, because you identified many of these projects in your last reexamination report. We were identifying, we need to do something with, or we need to.
We checked a lot of boxes.
We need to do something with this.
Especially for all the new folks who have moved into town over those ten years.
That would just be, that could just be a station at the public open house, right?
You know, it's hard for me, like, I think that I, there's so much information I want to get from people. Um, at the open house generally, if we might show some demographic information, so people say, oh, wow, I didn't realize.
Maybe some of that'll come out in your briefing.
Oh, it will, well, whatever the briefing is, it's.
All these ordinance updates and all the.
That'll all be in there and that's really feeding the reexam as well as making, you know, where do we go from here in the master plan? So whatever's in there, and if there needs to be some sort of summary of these things that's kind of pulled from that. And you can help me.
My, my point is, I like to always, you want to come out with a positive spin and. Promote what we've done, not just talk about.
Oh, I, I agree.
We don't have enough, you know, uh, crosswalks on Ferry Road or where, you know, whatever it is.
You could phrase the questions for the survey that I also know, like, hey, the new facility is.
Right.
Was, is there anything you want to add? Like, you know, you kind of start that way.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, that could be a preface to a question.
Yep, exactly.
Cause half the times in the last exam where.
That's essentially what reexam is, checklist.
And I, and I think, again, I encourage everyone, I encourage new members. You know, the demographic information, we did the affordable housing and all of those. Assets of having, it was interesting to see the change that you have. You know, age and population, how to find your friends. You know, that is going to, you know. You're talking about a group of young parents. You're gonna see. A significant difference in types of facilities that they want to see. You know, because and I'm saying, it's not true for everybody, but the more you have, you know, visiting that community, you know. What are you looking for?
They want, they might want more yoga studios.
You know. I think you're probably going to see a very positive reaction to a lot of the recreation, the passive recreation facilities you have. But you may also be surprised if people tell you, you want to see more.
And we talked about that, we had, we had a recreation survey recently done.
Did you send that to us?
Should have been, if not, um. I know you had asked me about the survey and I said, the only one I'm aware of is the recreation one. And that was through um. DJ's office. And it, and it asked a lot of those questions.
Yeah, that you, would you.
It's, 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 when was the time?
This is a.
In the last six months.
This is a basic question, and it's probably a stupid question, but is it going to look different? Like, is the document going to be alive and tangible? And the one that we have now is so sliced together and it's old papers that have been scanned in. Is there anything cohesive that, that this group can?
Do you want to carry that tradition or you want, do you like that rustic look or do you want something new?
I don't, I don't want, I want it to be, I'm just wondering if there's something that's, that feels a little more breathable and that's a lot more updated.
Well, I'll say, I'll say this, our approach to to master plans, you know, they can get very worded depending on what you need, right? And uh, you know, some towns, they want to have real hand in the authorship of it and they wordsmith it. Um, we believe. To, we want to keep them so that you pick up information very quickly if you're just a resident, and when you pick this up. That it's as bulleted as we can make it and as little text as we can put in there. And where we can to illustrate things that there are graphics and pictures and precedents and things.
Like the zoning map, will it be legit? Like, these are things that as a resident.
We've already turned it into a shapefile. I mean, we've, we've already turned it to G I S.
Let's be very clear.
We'll read that, but it's like, that's at least a little more.
When I look at a master plan, either from someone that's, we're having an application. I'm looking at special regions and again, if you're trying to do certain things, like I, if you were. If you were the applicant this evening, you'd have gone through our special reasons and found something.
And then argue that.
And argue that, you would argue from that. So from when it's a living document, it depends on what you're looking for. I like to see the updated, you know, zoning where, you know, as opposed to. If you go three feet deep into the website, it's like, okay, here's the ordinances that are pending that that nobody knows that have been Godfied, you have to gotta know. And it affects your application because it changes the height requirement, it changes something with vaulted ceiling, changes some, some land use definition. You will also look in many instances, I do, depending on what I'm doing at that particular time, the land use, is it up to date? You know, or do we find out, you know, when? The applicant comes in and says, yeah, I know it's commercial, but you know how many residential should really have in this commercial zone? This is the action we use, that landing document becomes important, as opposed to the zone, because if you just looked at the zone, okay, it's perfect. Hell no, it's mixed. There's a commercial on the first floor, the residential on the top. Only questions I ask the series, that will map, and you know what's there. And if those are the living parts of the document, the rest comes into your ordinances, but again, your ordinance, you're only informed. By what you set out in the master plan, again, we thought about it for, we ought to do this and the ordinances ought to reflect that. Okay, and then that informs the area council, okay, this is what people want to do. There's a problem with vaulted ceilings, it continues to be a problem. There's a problem with parking, it continues to be a problem, it continues about having to do this. You know, continue to talk about what are, how our communities different, it's on a seasonal basis. You know, not so much here, but you know, I represent Belmar also, there's, there's a whole section on what do we do in the shoulder seasons? And what are we, you know, there's a parking problem in Belmar, not in February. Right? There's those kinds of things, but inform you as to what your borough that it can do for their capital projects, whatever your survey comes back this time, such, you know what? We want a theater. Where we can see plays, we, we want, we want something more than borrowing the school facility. Or we want, we'd like to enter into a shared partnership for, for combined monies. Where we get some money from school, enter into a combined, a shared services agreement. Where we get to use some school money, you get to use some bar money, we'll build a first-class facility. I don't know if that's going to happen, but again. I'm seeing things like that in different communities. And this is where it starts, it's a great idea, and the survey usually informs that. When we got the surveys before, again, I wasn't there at the survey stage, but I saw your reexamination report. The reason we checked off all those things, because we knew they were on the lips. That's how the. But that's how the, hey, you better do something about affordable housing before you get building tramity came about. Hey, we need to do something with this facility, that's how it came about. So what do you want to see in the next ten years? For, to make your community more livable.
So we got, um.
That's what becomes a look it up.
We've got ten days of warning before we can have a public hearing on a draft. That public hearing happens in a planning board meeting.
Yes, planning board adopts the master plan and the reexamination report.
You try to do that all at once, you're not doing multiple.
Well, it's going to be one document essentially, that's why we're doing it.
And it comes, so the public, so assuming people would come and make comment at that public hearing, because that'll be the first time. Or. When it's made available will be the first time they've had exposure to the draft and so what, like if, if there's.
It doesn't, you could post it a month before, if you had.
Right, I mean, we're, we're gonna post it as, I, I mean, ten days is the minimum, right? So you would have to then, you know, post the um. Uh, I'm sorry, post the, the draft, and then you have the public hearing, I assume. It gets approved at that meeting or there's then a process.
That's our assumption, our assumption is because of the process we're going to undertake, that this is, you know.
It doesn't have.
Reflects the, the, the community uh interest in this.
And it doesn't have to go to any of the other, does it have to go to zoning?
No, no.
Doesn't have to go anywhere to get.
Those accounting planning board.
But, but that's a different, that's just a filing thing.
Yeah, that's a file.
But that's after it's been approved.
After it's adopted, within thirty days, it's filed with the county planning board and with the uh office of planning advocacy in the state.
With the notice that you provide to them.
That's right.
I'm talking about before it's approved by the.
No, that's what, that's what Doug was just saying, it goes to the county, it goes to the, it goes to the county, yeah.
Okay. And so, um. We only have to approve it before August twenty.
Adopted, yeah.
Adopted, okay. So.
I mean, that's.
You've described a process effectively that starts now, but I guess goes probably through. Like early January. Or at least our first meeting in January, it was, I would, I would think. Is when we would approve it, if we're able to get all this, which is, I think.
In Jan, no, July, July, we're talking about July, August twenty six.
Right, but I'm saying, if we're gonna have the open house at the beginning of December and then. That will inform the draft, then the draft gets completed. I would assume after that.
Yeah.
We made that theoretically, if we did everything and knocked everything down in sequence, you've outlined a process that takes, call it six months.
Please, the draft might take three.
I just see, what I'm trying to do is figure out like how much time. You, you know, because we've been talking about this, trying to get started, all this other stuff, and I'm just thinking to myself.
Or, or, or the, the schedule that we've laid, laid out, the draft schedule has a third week of July, uh, public hearing on it.
Okay. So what's.
But that gives us a buffer in case for some reason there's some hiccups, you know what?
Suddenly somebody wakes up and says, hey, by the way. That's when you raise your comments. Well, you said the draft could take three months. To do.
The draft.
To go back and forth with and whatever you know with it.
Well, the initial draft that we're going to build will start before the open house.
Right.
Right? And it's going to go through to March, right? February, March. And we're doing, and this will, they will, all these elements will go in parallel. And it's not like we're doing sequence and we're gonna have a, you know, we don't have a hearing on one, hearing on another, they're all getting built together. At the end of that draft, the master plan committee reviews it and the technical advisory subcommittees review it. And we meet with you, both the technical and the master plan committees, to go over the draft and we page turning. Everything, but each technical advisory committee will only be responsible for their particular piece. So they're the small pieces and then they all come up to the master plan committee.
Anyone have a question?
Yeah, should we not, I assume we throw Rick and uh. Yeah, recreation. Should.
He asked him how to do it, I'm doing circulation. I'm good with that.
We need one, yeah, we need people that aren't going to be burdened by, I'd even like. Someone else to take utilities, right? Because it's, it's going to be you and I, plus someone else on the mass, on the. You know, the main committee.
Oh, so you want to sew me out?
I mean, ideal.
Actually, you know what I said, I think the utilities is, is, is pretty much already treated by Rachel.
Okay.
So I, I don't, well, I feel as if we have a real close resource on that and so. So, so I don't know that, I think it's light, it's like it's light and I don't mind.
Fair enough, I appreciate that.
Uh, Sean had developed for whoever takes it, a shortlist of people that he recommended. The committee as well, so I have spoken to a few of them in the interim. And whoever wants it, I'm happy to connect you. It's a good group, it's a mix. And whoever wants it, I'm happy to connect you, it's a good group, it's a mixed group of people that have expressed interest in working on it, so.
Combining rec and.
We are combining rec and.
Open space, yeah.
Seems like a good one for the new guy.
Uh and you know, why not? I think it sounds good.
Right in.
That's the addition, that is the, alright, let's let's do it.
We'll talk about the group physically.
They need utilities also, right?
Really test this guy, you know.
Hard rec hang, you you need, you know, utilities.
Drain the stormwater.
Um does anyone have, so.
Just just one more thing I wanted to mention, um I would suggest somehow on your website dedicating a page to this. So that as things are, you know, as you're doing public meetings, as you're doing the survey, as you're doing an open house. If we are posting any draft elements, which. It's up to you to do that, right?
Right.
If you wanna have a farm full of people chiming in in the early stages. But any any information with respect to this. And then ultimately the adopted uh documents can be there with the rest of the documents that are up there.
So I'll do that website.
Um I think it'd been all about.
Communications.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to go through, yeah, Kristen, who's.
Yeah, I.
We need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I.
I would, I would suggest, you know, public engagement planning is is on us, right? Communications planning is on you, I would, I might almost have a separate committee just to talk about communications if you wanted to. Like, that's that, that's something that requires attention. It's gotta be tied in with the schedule, it's gotta understand what's gonna come out in terms of information. If there's gonna be a press release or anything like that, communications planning. If if you do it right, is very helpful.
Can you help with any? Visuals, graphics? If there's content you wanna push, I'm happy to make it.
Yeah. Okay.
Like, if if you wanted to brand this, right? You know, if you wanted to create a brand for this, so people see it. And they say, oh, that's the master. Cause it's a, it's a longer term project, it's let's, for, it's essentially a year long project, right, like, you know. Year long, so when folks see that, let's say you're putting a QR code out there so that they can go to the survey and it's got a a branded. You know, it's got the logo, but it's got something attached to it, so it's the master plan. That's a, that's a good idea, cause people say, oh, this is a master plan, oh, it's a master plan meeting, oh, it's a master plan open house. That could be helpful in your communications.
In bold caps, be far beyond.
I mean, most places like to create a little iconic. Iconic graphic identifier, so it helps.
Any ideas?
Um I specifically want to pull from this smoke stack image coming out of the. But no, I'll um, I can put a shortlist of things together and do that.
What uh what else, Michael?
I think that's pretty much it, um I I think, you know, those are the steps that are really gonna get this thing rolling and the public engagement steps that need to happen. So so that we can really start digging into the plan.
Questions, anybody have further comments?
Did we need to do a motion for the, for the committee, subcommittee?
Uh we should, yeah, we could probably do that. Yeah, we should do that today. Sure, and then that way we just got the planning board level reform.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to nominate. The technical subcommittees. Uh starting with housing, land use, uh Andrew Anderson. Uh utilities, I'll nominate a. Circulation.
Circulation.
Rec, rec and open space.
And uh master credit advisory committee, at least for starters, is gonna be myself. So you're great. And then whatever you need to.
Yeah.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mister Noah?
Yes.
Mister.
Yes.
Mister Ma.
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. If that's it. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Nothing? Okay. No, anything, everybody's. Quite a long.